I'm receiving the copy of invoice for the... one time if you are ready.
Yes, I'm waiting for them to send that to me. It was for when I registered for the September tax collectors convention. They charged the card and I didn't know they were going to charge the card. And so I've been asking them for it since last week. Okay. Usually they don't charge until you check in. Yeah. Still waiting. That's the only one not checked off, right?
Yeah, and I saw the receipt for all the others.
Yep.
But yeah, I think those are both checked.
Yep. Yes.
You got 14.
I think that was Nancy.
Oh, that too, okay.
Nancy Crosby, I already initialed that. No, this is just July. What I sent you was January through July, or January through last week. So that would be included in what you got. I kind of thought that we're going to issue the old tax. That that's clear. Yes. I mean, we'll get in touch with Powell and find out what the best way to do that is. I've got a thank you card from Cheryl Bianchi. You can read that one.
To the town clerk, fire chief, and the rotation. Thank you, thank you, for rescuing us during the big storm. You were quick to come to our aid and lifted a heavy burden from us. Your dedication is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Steve and Cheryl. How do you say your last name?
Bianchi.
Yeah.
That's a nice note. There it is. Thank you to that law and to Adam. We have one notice of intent to cut to sign. Thank you. We have three land use change tax warrants to sign. We need to sign up here, print, sign, and date on page one. And then print, sign, and date on page two. There's three separate ones and you'll do it six times.
And what was this for again?
Land use change tax. Print, sign, mandate.
Yes.
Eric was trying to look at the little print there. On the second page two, Eric. Where it says assessing officials or something.
So what is it that they want to change?
They've already changed it. They've taken a portion of their current use parcel out of current use. So now they're paying the taxes for that. Do you have some July 22nd? Is there comments?
No, no, that one's, no.
I do. I've got a couple things. On the second page, just a couple of line of things. Just let me know what the line starts with. So if it starts, the paragraph starts with you have provided a recant. Yep. On the second line, I think it'd be clearer if you said to assist with insert blood prevention. And then insert mitigation via upgraded security infrastructure. And then for the non-public sessions, receiving minutes. I think that we should break it up into non-public session one and non-public session two. And for session... On the first page or the last? The last page, sorry. So non-public minutes for seal for session one. Yeah. And then let's say motion by Eric, seconded by Joe Val, approved by a will call vote. Okay, this is the one I didn't have, didn't have that information. So motion by Eric, right? Second by, I mean, and approval by will call vote. Okay. Then for non-public minutes for session number two. Feeling notes of the motion by Tom. Second by Eric. And I noted that this session should have been public session. Might have been. Okay. Is that it? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 22nd. Motion would be changed if this is now there?
Yep. I'll check that. Always approval.
Bye. Let's just sign. And here's non-public meeting minutes number one from July 22nd. I think motion to approve the the non-public session number one on July 22nd.
I'll check. Always approval. All right, all right.
Hi. Do we have the corrected minutes for session number two?
There you go.
Do we have the corrected minutes for session number two?
Oh, I didn't know it was down yet, but yeah, I know. Hang on to this. I don't have no way of putting this down. So we'll have to use it for next week or something.
I don't know.
Well, that was my pocket.
Yep.
And so this is what Eric did out.
Yep.
And I don't have any way of typing it in.
Okay. Well, I can just get a copy of those minutes. And then if you need others. I haven't been found. So you can get that. If she's marking it up, then I'll just make a copy of what she marked up.
So, you can get that, because if she's marking it up, then I'll just make a copy of what she marked up.
And the changes I proposed are, um, at the beginning, there's this Tom requested that the select board that the SBA moved without Jeanette. Insert Joe Bass requested a reason, none was provided. After Tom's, we can take our minutes. Insert the line, Jeanette's after meeting. The top of the second. Page. Joe Bass, the previous board delegated, insert new comma, as a chair, comma, toward the legal. On the fifth paragraph, Tom, I make a motion for Eric to seek, insert information on newly go for the town of Dalton. Insert for the select board to consider at our next meeting. Two lines down, Joe Bass, I'm going to push back, I think this meeting should have been held public, it should have been public for him. Down the next to bottom line, Joe Bass voted may, insert, and again, objected that this meeting was held in non-public session and should have been held in public session.
Should I just attach those to what I have here, or? With your changes?
Um, I made motion for stuff for July twenty-second, meeting minutes, with the second committee.
No, because, uh, I'm not gonna go with you on, uh, the motion I made for Eric to seek information. I made a motion for Eric to seek newly go for the town of Dalton, those were my words. You're not gonna, I, I'll let you have the other stuff that you're not looking now. And, uh, we did, Faris.
For the seeking.
Excuse me, I want you to talk. Uh, Faris, uh, did not leave in the meeting and not given a reason. I don't think we, I didn't think we had to, but you're right, we did. He said that we don't have to, and I just walked the board. And I wasn't awkward about it. So, you can have all the rest, I don't care, but that last thing that you put in the, uh, information, that's not true. That's, that's not gonna be there.
So, you're. You're saying that you made a motion for him to seek legal counsel, not information on legal counsel? That's what you're saying?
I understand that I made a motion for Eric to, uh.
Seek new.
Seek legal, newly go for the town of Dalton.
So, maybe you just write here, just say that. The statement I made is as type written, and we can just go with that, I, I don't. I mean, if you guys aren't going to agree. Because I thought we, we used to get information to bring it back to the board at our next meeting, not. That he didn't allow them to make a decision, that's not how the select board should work.
No, we, we just got that before, yeah, the reason why.
Can you just put your name there? So that it's clear who wrote that. You're remembering it one way, he's remembering it another way. Yeah.
No, no, it's, it's hard, but you know, I, there's, when you wrote that stuff down, I saw, oh, yeah, you did say that. And I respect that. I believe in you to respect the fact, I just said that, I did not add that. That word means a lot right now.
So, you're wanting to approve it as you read aloud, and you're wanting to approve, you're okay with the changes except for that sentence?
Right.
So, are we gonna vote on, I don't even know how you vote on that.
I make a motion, test my motion, to approve the non-public session number two minutes from July twenty-second. Um, with my awareness and with Tom's, um, verification on his memory on the minutes as well.
Is that?
I'll say that. All in the table.
Joe Bass. Did you cover it here?
Yeah.
July twenty-nine.
We'll get on that, I, I would like to table this one, because I haven't had time to really get through it. Uh, to really read it.
Okay.
So, if you don't mind, we can go for our next meeting, that'd be great.
Yeah, in two weeks, right?
I know what I have, I.
Um, do we wanna get highway stuff done?
Yeah.
So that Adam doesn't have to be here all night? Not bad.
What's that?
Come on out. You're the next contestant on phrases, right?
Don't worry, Esther, you guys get the, oh, sorry, son. We can help. Something for this one. I'm right. The seven-year lease purchase. The three oh eight.
This is my copy, but you can look at it, pass it around.
Did you get a price on the three oh nine? The only difference is, from the three oh nine, from the three oh eight, is that it set up, the three oh nine set up for the merchant head.
Right.
And it's like twenty-five thousand dollars more for that machine, just because of that setup. It's the same exact machine, that's the only difference.
For renting purposes, you mean, it's twenty-five thousand?
No, just for the machine.
Oh, okay.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars more than the three oh eight, because that one's set up for the merchant. But the three oh eight down the road can be set up for the merchant.
Okay.
Because I went to the three oh nine, he's like, well, you're gonna be doing a lot of motions, and stop roads, and I don't plan on, I need the bit road. He said it's like twenty-five or, or over twenty-five thousand bit nights between the two.
Isn't it cheaper than the backhoe?
Yeah, it's around the same, I think. That was, uh, boss, but, uh, but it's through the same person, Jeff. For. Seven-year annual upfront lease purchase payment is, uh, for the machine and all accessories, the thumb, the rolling bucket, the blade. All set right up is a hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred, and for the year is twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. It's all right there.
Can you just summarize, so we have it in our thinking? Why you looking at for the next meeting?
For road work.
Makes it easier.
And.
That backhoe, you could spend the day and not cover much ground, with an excavator, you can really cover ground. That, you can only reach so far with the backhoe, can get off-road with it. In an excavator, you can get out pretty much anywhere you want.
And it's made stitching right with it.
Exactly, the rolling bucket, yeah. You can.
They can do the, like, I know, even before the flood, you talked about improving the dishing and all that.
Yeah.
And, right now, we're hiring in a street rail, right?
Yep.
And. What's the cost of that, that we're?
Depends on how many hours they get in, but averaging anywhere is from thirteen thousand to twenty-five thousand a week.
That's what I was remembering, that's why I'm just.
Just right here, for the year.
I've already.
And we've been hiring in every week since the flood.
I know, I was wondering if that. Go over fifty thousand.
Yeah.
You know, in a short period of time, you know, and the thing is, if you think about it, twenty-five thousand for seven years versus, uh, fifty thousand dollars a month or whatever, right now.
The amount of money we have into them, we've owned us already.
Yeah.
And that's some.
I just wanna.
And have it added to the big. A big, big thing. Because when I called Bob, I was going, oh, he's like, yeah, that's one thing I effed up on, he said his town should have had one a long time ago.
What's it like?
Seven years, we get rid of it. We wash our hands from that and have an hour and drop.
Yeah.
Or keep it if you want.
Yeah.
If it's not more out by then.
The thing about it is, if it's used properly, it'll last a long time. If you get into a lot of rock and be crap out of it, it's gonna, it's gonna wear out quick.
Yeah.
So, with what he's doing, that should last a long time.
And everybody on the team can drive it now?
Yep. Yeah.
Is there any question about the, um. Money that we put towards leasing or bringing people in, as being reimbursable money, versus us purchasing this as not being reimbursable?
Well, that's something I think it'd be, it would be wise to put it down and say that we had to do it because of the emergency. And they will make the decision, it'll either be A or N. On a, on a, on a regular situation, if it was an emergency situation, no, they wouldn't help us out.
Right.
But this here is, uh, this is a devastation here, and, uh, all of COAS and, uh, Jackson County were approved for the disaster. The only fact I didn't like hearing is that, is that FEMA's are not money.
Yeah, that's a scary part.
And that's, uh.
I heard that according to.
I think the other thing was, just, just running for mitigation through USDA, um. To prevent this from happening, where FEMA is just really reimbursing our costs and dealing with it. But this seems like this might tie into the mitigation.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think you're gonna find that you purchase this machine, he's gonna be using it to carry on with these repairs on these roads. That's gonna be reimbursable through FEMA.
Or reimburse it in a base rate per hour.
Right, yeah, they have their own rate, but it's pretty close to what, but I have the FEMA rates, they're pretty, they're right up there. I mean, it's, I, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think the town's gonna get money back as opposed to probably giving it to the private contractors.
Well, it would be foolish not to go with it.
I, I think so.
So, do you have any problem with doing a lease, with the select board making the decision? Um, no, or I say, allow the select board to make the decision now, and then it'll go to town meeting at March?
The only thing I gotta ask is, they need money upfront, correct?
No.
No. I know.
No.
And are we signing a seven-year lease, or the year-to-year?
Seven-year. But you can wash your hand from that, when town, when town meeting comes, that the people, for whatever reason, say they don't want it.
So, it has an escape clause.
Yeah, it goes.
It has to have an escape clause, that's, that's what I want.
Yeah, exactly, just like the backhoe. The backhoe's the same way.
This is, is this not a working session where public comments?
But, I'm trying to get a feedback from it.
Okay.
So, that's good to know, that would be an excellent deal. And I, I don't see, I can't see where the town would not go with that, because it's only, it only stands to reason. You know, if you do take care of it and keep the roads updated really well, you need something like that.
Yeah.
And the machine volumes are, how much was that a week?
Well, that's anywhere, depending, anywhere, however much hours he puts in, depending on the week.
A hundred and forty-five dollars an hour.
So, it's like thirteen grand, or twenty thousand.
It's like a no-brainer.
So, if we, of course, we, we have to look into, uh, funding for the gravel, just so you can do the job.
Yeah.
So, you, you would basically have your excavator and grader out there, you would still hire an extra truck to keep bringing gravel.
Yeah, most of the time, they're gonna have to.
Yeah.
To get them done before winter.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. That, I will need is trucks.
This is a liability, we have to.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think the motion that we proceed for the lease on the excavator, that's not bad.
I'll second it. All in the table. All right.
Bye.
Bye.
And I really need it for Smith Road. Uh, for Smith Road.
Yeah. There's a plan with that.
So, the only thing I did, I just concerned the plumber, Jeff and Joe, don't move in the barriers.
Yeah, they said you could, I, well, I couldn't, yeah. Because when they were telling me about putting them up, they said, you know, you gotta get your road when you get from that. He said, if you gotta move them, move them, so I'm gonna have to. But I gotta have the power line raised, I gotta hold a heavy source in them, because it's too low now. Because of them raising their bridge to get to my road. Cause of them raising their bridge to get to my road, we'd share it and all. So they gotta raise it up so I can. So yeah, a lot of work there, just for that one room.
And that road be fixed?
Yeah. Nothing money won't fix. It's been, uh, it's been a burden, it's been a burden. It's been one of the brooks that I really dreaded.
Cause we thought we'd go down on the side of the cemetery and we can't do that.
No, it was hopefully.
What was that, stay owns?
Stay owns, stay owns, and then the neighbor, and then them.
And then there's, well, right behind them.
Yeah, on that backside. Cause I was hoping to, uh, put in a new driveway on the cemetery side because of it being town property.
Right.
Just taking a little bit of right away, fencing both sides, like me and Eric were saying, and come in from the backside. Yeah, that would've been the cheapest, best, easiest way out, but, you know. Next thing is maybe getting the people that are in that trail and all the stuff out, out there, uh, the salt sheet. And put the driveway in there. Buy that house out.
Get rid of our, our, our house.
Always option.
I thought it was so. I have no choice but to pick it up.
And do you have an estimate for the cost?
You said it's a trail at the buyout?
I said it'd be nice to buy that house that sits right on the door, that hard door home and garage. We could buy that, I'll, I bet you that'd be cheap to fix on that road, if you could get on the satellite in that place. Cause we can make the road right down over the door.
How much? How much land do they have there?
Not much.
Did you ever, did you ever hear back from the engineer or anything?
Not yet. No, I have not received the message on it.
I was just thinking on that, uh, where if their road all washed out, if they had enough property, instead of buying out, you could always, we could always hire a contractor and lift it up and run the foundation out of the way. That would be a lot cheaper than, uh, buying a house. That's just a thought.
Right, no, it is anything.
I don't know.
Another.
Yeah, he's, he's talking about that house, if we could buy it out, that'd be the ideal, in order to, to get the bridge in there.
To put a road.
The road, but the road is. If they wanna sell out, one of the options, if they, if they had enough property and if they went with it, you can hire a contractor to put a foundation, then lift it up, put it, put the house in.
Oh, move the house out.
Well, another option I thought about too, is seems how the town owns the left side. If we had to take so much of their property, is there a way we could give them a little more on this side? Equal out for what we're taking from this side, just to take that bank out to build the road down.
I don't know.
I don't know if we could.
We could plant part of the cemetery, but.
You know, I mean.
I don't know if we can do that.
It's got a lot of material up, lots and lots of it.
So we're getting an estimate from the engineers for the cost of the road, right?
We have, uh, gee, he's gotta put all the, he's gotta go back through it and put a number on all of that, of the cost. So, yeah, but no, I didn't have someone come in and just look at Smith Road, oh, we all have everything, everything.
So state will have a big say in that, either way, because of the bricks that are in there. You would be in, you'd be tied up with the state trying to traverse back and forth, figure out what we're gonna do.
We break it off on the bridge in two years.
What's that?
It's gonna be two, three years before they put a dig in there.
My gosh.
I talked to him the other day, they don't even have a plan yet.
They don't know if they're gonna leave it where they raised it or if they're gonna drop back down.
There isn't even a plan.
And that's why they put that single lane over to the left side if you're going from Dalton to Wilton, so I have room to work and fix that road.
Well, that way the, the bridge could also stay open while they.
Well, they do the right.
The permanent bridge in place.
Correct. But yeah, they don't know if they're gonna ra- leave it where they raised it or if they're gonna drop it.
So that's something you would have, you'd have to talk to the, the state, you would have to talk to land on that, come up with a plan. Like, to figure out what we're gonna do. Are you just?
The state already knows I'm gonna do my best. They told me to move the barriers when I'm ready to build my road.
Right, but you, you mentioned that it was better if the house was moved.
Yeah, but that's not something.
No, I said to buy that place, that whole piece of property.
That would be something that the board.
I said it would be cool.
We have to, and I don't know about the, I mean, if they're going to ask. And they're caught up on that at all, I mean, I think this is.
Well, the thing about it is, you, you know, if it's, if it's a necessary necessity for traffic, and I don't believe in taking so much property without paying them.
Right, right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you have to, even within the survey, but that's a matter of, people who can do it, I, I just don't know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
I'm sure they won't, so I was just saying it'd be nice if we could just buy that piece of property and get rid of the trail and the stuff there and just finish the driveway down and be done with it. I'm sure that will never happen.
Unless the town has a gas stop in the town or in somewhere else.
Pretty.
Yeah, it looks good, yeah.
Another reason to consider buying them out is this isn't gonna be the last time the town's gonna have to pay to replace that road.
So. I think, I think we should figure out how we approach the land, landowner, and I think this is something we would definitely want.
A lot of money for one helps.
Well, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be wise to start with having the landowner come in and, and with, with, Adam and discuss it first here and then go further from there? To see how they feel.
I think we need to do more homework for that.
Yeah, I think so too.
We need to be prepared for that and know what it's worth. That way if they come back with some screwball answers, we could be like, yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Right.
And know the options.
And they'll say no.
And know what the options are. You never know, they, you never know, they may not say no.
No, it's worth a try if we can do it, that'd be the best way out of it. Cause the other thing I'm worried about too is when the state turns on their bridge, now are they gonna have to always turn right to go turn around and come back? Cause it's not covered now.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the bridge. And they're building it closer to the road, so is it gonna block off from turning left out of there? It's gonna be a whole other challenge. And I gotta get a road in there anyhow this year, so I can follow it and I can get in and out.
And are we sure that there are any federal programs that allow municipalities to buy out, uh, properties like that? I know, uh, you know, communities along the Mississippi are constantly buying out properties to get them out of, you know, flood, flood zones. So, uh, I, I would say we, we need to research this pretty thoroughly before we do anything because, you know, this may be something that their programs are allowed to do it.
And it may be the ones that are actually applying to this. It's gonna cost the town a whole lot of money to buy that property that's been in our family for over a hundred years and they're.
They won't. Rain. No, they will not sell.
Nope.
They've been there for over a hundred and something years, the family, long time, they won't.
Well, you figure they moved from the trail out to the road's place.
Yeah, and they used all that piece that I was talking about buying, but they sectioned it off and sold it. And wings, I'd actually, man, I wish my parents would sell, or her parents, whoever, whichever parents it was, could sell that piece up front. That little trailer, the one that I was talking about maybe buying if it's possible. So, yeah, me too. Cause I know you'd be bored.
Well, we could do some homework, we need to do some homework, um.
It's gonna be quite a project. The nice thing is I know they do own, I would say roughly four to five feet into that bank that goes up to that house. So that will help a little bit.
What about all that stuff from that property that's piled there? Quite a bit right there on the edges, isn't there? Like going down the.
The bank?
Minecage waves, yeah, that, from the trail, the people that live in that trail.
They just have to move it.
There's, they've got a lot of stuff piled there, I think.
Okay.
They would just have to move it, just when you talk about, those fence, the screen, the cement, it's on the. Yeah, on the other side of that property.
Right.
He's talking about that Smith roadside.
Smith roadside, when you're looking down at the bank that goes up to that property, they all like four to five feet on that bank. That I can take and rip out and throw down and start building.
It also gives you.
And it'll get me a few more feet.
Yeah, right.
So the people that live in the Smith Road on that.
Yes, correct. The pens are right there. Yeah.
So.
No, I've been down there a few times, ready, looking at it. Just trying to come up with a couple of options and plans for that one.
So do we wanna let, should we have to shout to legal and get a sense for what the plan is or, or do we want to use legal as a support?
I would like to personally have some board go and take a good look at it before we jump on that.
Have you seen them?
I would buy it, uh, but there's a lot of stuff going on.
Right, right, now let her out of the way and do something.
And I would be able to look, so I know what I'm talking, what I'm talking about. But I'll get together with you at some point, go down there and take a real good look.
I have to bring you down.
Yeah.
So I think that's important, but I'm, I'm just worried about delaying this, cause we winter plumbing. And we also wanna ask that, I agree that we should go, I mean, I looked at it, but I could look at it more closely, definitely. Um, we should do that before, but then, shall we proceed with legal meeting set up with?
The thing is, until we, uh, until we decide what you really can and can't do, we need legal, is my point. I don't wanna go spend money on legal if we don't have to, that's the other thing.
No, I can put that little back away at once.
Yeah.
That's anyway.
But it's gonna be expensive.
Oh, yeah.
And it's gonna be prone to flooding again, possibly.
No, no, cause they took the cover now, they did a lot of nice work there, it shouldn't ever.
And if you put that back.
I'd like to continue the way they did.
You would say, you would have to put a lot of big boulders in there.
Four, four to five boulders, just like they did, so I gotta continue like they did.
You would have to have a bigger machine, you can't use a new machine on that.
Why?
You're gonna pick up big boulders with a new machine, is that big enough to this?
The three oh eight will hit that much, yeah.
Okay.
Nope.
Well, I just do much, destroy it first day.
No, no, I won't do that. I won't overwork it, that's for sure. But no, it's, I'd like to continue like they did.
Yeah.
And I, I believe we'll never have an issue with that road again, I don't think so. Cause what happened is that, what happened is that cover plugged up through debris, and that's what created that, now it's just wide open.
Yeah, you created the dam, not what it did like.
What else?
Where's the water?
Well, longer it was true.
That's like a national on the extreme.
Correct.
Cause it plugged the cover.
And that's what it was, there's just so much water coming out of the woods and everywhere, it was just pulling debris, plugging stuff and then finding the next easiest route.
I guess, um, putting that, it just looked like an awful lot that had to be filled in.
Oh, yeah, it is a lot of material.
Thirty things, but it's.
Yeah. A long ways.
So.
That's not no quick easy job.
And we could look up the assessed value of the property we're talking about.
I got my road fully dressed.
Yeah.
But it's not very big, and it's material, I'm troubled after the flood, cause I don't, I don't have an idea of, are we talking about twenty thousand feet slow or fifty thousand or a hundred thousand or, or five?
I was gonna say, I'd probably say at least a couple hundred thousand.
Then I think we should start looking at whether we could buy out the other property.
That's what I'm saying, if they will sell and they're okay with that, that might be the cheapest way out.
So that's what you need to, you need to ask that before you get legal involved. You need to build a report and ask, hey, listen, this is what it's gonna cost the town, would you be, would you consider?
Right.
Or do you have some ideas that would help the town, that type of thing?
But you need to know their options, I think if, if they come, if they say no, then you need to know your options. Okay, they're saying no, or they're saying we'll sell it to you for half a million dollars and we're saying no, so then you need to know what is your, gonna be your plan B, we don't know that. You know, I, I think we need to know all options, we need to talk to them.
One way or another, whether they sell or not, I gotta get that road built. So if that auction falls through, we're going right back to building Smith Road.
And that's why I wanted to move on this and find other options. Add, um, two two, is that somewhere around there? There?
I don't think so.
You're the map queen, what's that address there?
Right here. You want it, if I hand you my phone? No, it's, uh, two eighty-seven.
That's what I just said.
Oh, I didn't hear you say that.
I know it's just a humble home with a small garage.
Assessed value. Assessed value is one twelve four.
Right, exactly, if you could buy a road, get a couple of containers in there and that excavator, crush it down, throw it in.
Yeah.
Send it, finish the road again.
So.
And if Wayne.
Who's the owner of that property?
Uh, I think it means Chrissy.
Christina Chamberlain.
They call her Chrissy, I remember the way they're saying that, I don't know why I said it.
Chamberlain. And you never know, the Smith might say, we can get it back, we'll buy it. You've got a lot of options here, you just gotta know how far your options go. Right. So my question is, in terms of location, do we wanna do it as a board, that, or do we want to go and do this? Um, the preliminary work, if I'm concerned by it, that we keep moving forward on this and I think it's a length.
A lot of being involved in what's going on here, for respect.
Well, if you guys want, I can contact them and say, what, what would be if, if we had to take it as the town for eminent domain? What is the option of purchasing it? And what if they come back and say absolutely not, no? I mean.
Or come back with a, probably just keep it, yeah.
Well, before we do that, I wanna go look at it first before we start, go and stop that, um, that, that type of thing. I know you look at it, you, you're pretty, I mean, you look in the area, you like, so you know anyways.
So we talked about more delays, and Adam's saying you've got to get going on that.
I gotta wait.
You don't gotta get going, I.
I gotta wait for the telephone company to raise the line too.
Okay.
Cause they're in my way.
So that's not gonna be an issue.
So do you think you guys can get together sometime this week so we can discuss it in the next meeting?
Whatever he wants to.
I can, I can, either Thursday or Friday, I will, I'll just, I'll meet you at the shop.
Yep.
Is anyone else planning on going as well, would I, do I need to close this as a meeting? Do you plan on going for that, if it's Friday, I can't.
Well, today, I'm, I can fly.
And then you have to do it this afternoon.
Yeah, I think I can do Thursday afternoon if you want.
Okay. Can you, is Thursday, does that work?
It works tonight.
What, I?
Don't see like two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Very late.
You did the highway department? Or you could meet here?
Yeah, here, wherever you want.
Okay. Gravel?
Oh, the gravel pile?
Yeah.
Down there, yeah. I, uh, they gave the quote, well, the bed price on it, it was ninety-eight thousand, plus some change.
I think it's like ninety-five.
So it had some, well, like, and, uh, I put the town sign down there, it was just, he said to pay as we can for it. So I don't move it.
So the next question, I know, can, can we afford to pay on that now?
Yep.
We're pulling up, add it.
We're gonna pay it in parts, so that we don't get ourselves in trouble.
Yeah, he said he was.
Cause we still have contractors working for us.
So if you get that excavator, you can, you can start right in on the roads.
Oh, yeah.
Looks good.
I'll leave us something on the printer. I'll be right back.
Oh, yeah, it's fourteen dollars a yard to have him come over and crush it. Everyone else is twenty-something dollars a yard and they're a lot further away. So I'm a hundred, short run, cheap rail trucking.
Yeah, every time.
Oh, yeah, just the materials from anywhere else at that amount, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I saw you at Food Company. So that's why I called them. I said, you told me you'd come over here and crush. And they said, yeah, it's a road to a star.
I'm ready to be used to my plan. Tell you, no, I wanna wait so she can do her minutes.
The last few invoices under vendors and contractors have not been paid. I just entered them because I received them. But they are included in the grand total.
So that, that basically cleans out the, uh, highway fund? Or is that the slush fund?
We have a slush fund. We have a capital and durable fund for paving, which, a lot of that would, didn't do that, right? And we had what, even a thousand in that?
Three.
Three seventy-five.
I think it's three and a quarter or something.
Yeah, I was calling for that.
And, yeah. You know, reimbursement, yeah.
Right.
For that job, no, that'll be, might not be.
Till next year.
Yeah, exactly.
Better than taking a loan at eight percent.
So you're telling me at this point, we don't have to take a loan? About one new stat, fix note roads, is you gotta pay for a trucker. But we get the money around to be able to pay for the trucking.
We have the money.
We should be all right.
So the other thing we have is our funds balance, and we can take one from that because it's an emergency. But it's a process. The ERA, right at the beginning, right after the floor.
Well, I make a, if we make a motion to, to have to second travel, get it, you know, the agreement or whatever.
Yes.
So that we don't have any, any chance of losing it.
It's locked, yeah.
Locked in.
Mine is the, the sign on it, town development.
So you already paid some money, you're telling me.
Because I told him, when we talked about it, about paying that concession, so it went all at once. He said, well, I'll just send you the whole bill and you just pay as you go, as you want, part of yours. No, he made a note when he's down there. Because I knew people are gonna see him down there and swing in.
Yeah.
He said, oh, it's town development. Because he did a pile two for, uh, Jet Seven, because he found out he was down there. So he did a separate pile for him, for his project. But it's all his pile and I'm mounting it for carrying on.
Yeah.
Seven thousand, hundred and forty. An inch and a quarter of that, what, you're gonna sell that in the field.
So this is really just the start of what we're looking at in terms of doing roads?
Yeah.
And shit for vendors.
Oh, and that, that be adding invoices on here? So that's included in that three seventy-one?
That total.
How much?
No, look at the sheet I gave you. It's on there and it's included in that.
Okay.
Well, all of them are already brought down. They just need to be capped.
And that's where you can use the scrap up and that's where we can use the paving.
Yep, the, on your core of gravel to cap them.
You've got enough.
Yeah.
There.
Yep.
Well, again, I say thank you for all of your, your making work for this project, Adam.
You're so, you're welcome.
In your team.
We, we will until we die.
Oh, yeah, that's every day.
We get the problem right into it.
Yep. You have to roll the going, so I can contract the edges that were washed out before I cap them.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on roads?
Nope, that's all.
Your open position? Your open position? On the highway department?
Oh, higher level person?
Yeah.
I know, uh, Joe Easle, I don't know if he's still interested or not. I know I talked to him.
So first, we should back up and talk about your vacant space. Why you have a vacant?
Oh, yes, sorry. I'm tired. Uh, Mike gave me his two-week notice.
At the beginning of?
And this would be the third week now. His last day was the sixth week. He gave him two weeks notice, left him two weeks and, uh, he went.
Yeah.
Left me.
So fixing the roads, I'm thinking about, you got one, one, the youngest kid that we put in there that can't drive, uh, the grader or.
Right.
Or the backhoe. The other one can do.
The backhoe.
The backhoe.
Yeah. And that's a later.
He can do the excavator too?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So my, my question is, do you need that extra person or do you want that extra person that has a CDL?
Well, that's the thing. I know Joe, he does CDL. And not just that, he's.
He's a diesel mechanic and a licensed, uh.
He can get us some inspections, he can get us set up for inspections.
Really?
Right at the town dramatics and we can get all the town equipment for fire trucks inspected every year.
That's, that's a diesel guy?
Yeah, Joe Easle.
Yep.
So if we're going to recruit, we need to.
Well, I don't know, I don't know why, but.
Dumas?
Do, Dumas.
Okay, I just always know Joe Easle.
My neighbor.
But do we want to post the same job description we did last year?
If you, if you need them, then I'd say, yeah. But my, my other question is, and I don't want, I don't want to be a hot, but the younger guy, is he, is he gonna be able to keep busy enough? You know, like especially for the winter and stuff like that, you know, is he gonna continue working out?
Oh, yeah.
He will, okay, yeah.
He's not afraid to jump though.
Okay.
No, he's not afraid to jump though. He's learned.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you have two backup people now?
Yeah.
Take it in case, my turn's off.
Yep. Yep.
Put something out, please, learn a pickle.
So I make a motion that we post the vacant space to highway department?
I'll second it. I think, I think it, and that, it wouldn't hurt to say must have CDL.
Right.
Because Joe, uh, because we, we don't need anybody else with no, without a CDL.
Right.
Or they can't do that equipment.
The only thing is, nowadays, you're not gonna get someone that's forty-one dollars and all they start with a CDL. Them days are a long time.
Did, and you said you talked to him?
Yep.
ERA gave you an idea?
Roughly, yeah, what you kind. Yep.
So we'll post it, require them to CDL. Does that change?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, you and I can get together and go over the job description that we have and you could let me know what needs to be changed?
Okay. I don't know what he said. He's like, I'm not no professional operator. But he said, I do know how to run them. And I'm sure he's been around it long enough. He, you put him in something he don't know, I'm sure he can figure it out. Been around, it works on them.
He's getting it running.
Oh, yeah, and that's huge. That's, that'd be hilarious. Could take a lot off my shoulders right there. Having someone that's mechanically required, so that's not all, all on my shoulders too. You know, that many inspections, would have to leave, get them done, set up for the town.
Or leaving the empty floor on.
Yep, because all of his fire trucks.
You spend a few bucks on truck inspection a year. It's expensive, that big truck.
Yep, and that part of you, if you get set up.
Yep. I turned in your paperwork on the two guys who did a CDL class too, so.
Yeah, that's the other town. We have the two young fellows going to the fire department.
Okay.
That guy didn't know.
Yeah.
So they can get down.
I'd love, I'd do it.
That'll save, save some big money there.
Yeah, and a whole summer dealing with it. Because I guess now it's not six weeks, it's all summer. One week I'm on, four days out of the week.
At ten to twelve grand.
Mm-hmm.
Fire Academy has a grant to pay for, so.
Yeah. Crazy.
Good opportunity, you might as well take it.
The longer the shorter the truck damage.
Right?
Um. Great question.
Yeah, I have, uh, Blacktop. They'll be here to do the bridge work. The, the paving.
Yeah, yeah.
The two bridges we have to pave for the grant that we got two years ago. That's gonna be out this summer.
Did you get in touch with him to see if he can move us up in the schedule?
He said, I'll do the best I can. He says, I have a few other municipalities that I have already walked in with a long time ago and I'm like. He's gonna do the rest he can, and I get it.
Sorry for that, Paul. So I, I'm trying to remember, was that wanting to be said by the, seven thirty first? I think it's that over. Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to have, we've got some information? I don't think so.
I think he'll be here before I do.
Okay, I mean, you're not gonna do much paving in November, December, unless we're really lucky.
Is that a grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the grant was forty-one thousand, something change, and their bid was twenty-five or six thousand to do it.
So if you, you get close to that, you don't think he's coming to the blood spell so that they can follow?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna bring up that we apply for the state provided money for bridges, with the stipulation that we spent two years trying to come up with.
They're the only ones that sent back a, a pricing on it and got back in contact with it. The other one came and walked on it. Ask them and.
Yeah, I've heard anything like that. So how much do you think they knew?
It was.
Mid to upper twenties?
Probably five to twenty-two for all of them.
For all of them, okay.
Yeah.
And then I think we got forty-one thousand.
Yeah, so right.
So we might have to get money back for the state.
He's gotta look and see what other work they already did on the purchase this year, because that.
We gotta add that to it. Because I gotta, before they come to pay that, we gotta cut the brush off it again. Do that this spring.
Yeah.
We wash them, clean them down, so let's add it into it.
Yeah.
So the town gets some money back for that.
Okay.
And I'm not gonna have to do the same thing before they come to pay.
And whatever you did earlier this year, you need to pull that into it as well?
Yeah, all right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah.
I'm just seeing the difference in, uh.
Yeah.
What we thought was. What do you want?
Well, I finally got someone in the hands and we wanna do it.
Yeah.
I go on outs, want to send back the price. I'm doing that.
And you'll have guys to set up the election, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, if you need to call Mike and do it, he's done it.
Right, oh, yeah.
If your guys are walking, I'll wanna move.
Wanna move, yeah. Remind me.
Oh, I will.
Please.
Oh, I will. All right. I think that's it for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Get to work.
I know.
Do we need any other, like, Ron, do you have any other emergency events?
Uh, I think Ron has some stuff.
Okay. So, first of all, we did get a declaration, probably already know that, so, one point nine was the FEMA estimate. Which was just strictly estimate. Um. Of course, I do have a concern. And. Would have studied, but through an email, I understand that, um, early on in this process, there was a citizen that was emailing emergency management stating on behalf of the select board, did you know, where the select board? I guess I'm a little concerned if that's the case, because then it puts two people being represented, you know, that, that the town's representing, if you will, to handle this stuff. It's usually handled by the E and B, which is me. But I don't think, I don't think it looks good to have two people representing the town, if you will. I've been on top of this, I've done my job, I've gone out of my way, I brought it to Jeanette's attention. I mean, I don't know. I mean, is somebody that you'd rather have doing this or, or, or what? I mean, I don't know. I think it looks, I think it looks bad. I think, I just think it looks bad for the town, that's all. When you've got more than one person dealing with emergency management. I deal with them on a daily basis. I talk to them two, three times a day sometimes. I've met them personally. So I feel that I'm doing what I have to do and, um, I guess.
That would be, you sent an email out and I didn't recognize.
Um.
You called, you know, forty, I didn't recognize all those emails on it.
No, if I.
Do we know who, who it was?
Um.
Is that the email you sent on the fifth?
Yes.
And I didn't really look at it too closely, because usually you come in and you let me know.
Yep. I just wanted to address it, that's all, and just figure out, and then, like I said, I've got some other information, but I, I, um, I don't mind doing it, but I don't wanna waste my time. I don't wanna put all kinds of effort into it.
Well, they're busy too, so.
I'm not getting paid for my time here and, and I don't mind, but I think between Adam, you and I, Jeanette and I, we pretty much have covered the bases here and, um.
You said you sent it out to Jeff?
I sent you a big email.
Yeah, I have it here.
Yeah.
I don't recognize the email address. It's W E C fair at Yahoo dot com.
Sure, wait.
Okay.
So is this on behalf of the board or is it just something private?
It doesn't have private other things, okay?
Yeah, it just, it says here that.
What I have is conducting outreach on behalf of the select board.
Yeah.
Was relayed to me, the individuals conducting outreach on behalf of the select board.
We have the select board, never discussed that.
Did, uh, I know that, uh, they came and they all met right here.
That was, that, that was FEMA and E S and all of that. We went around that day, Eric went, Joe Beth went, and a lot of stuff they have to do. And that was what was important. That's where this declaration came from and that's where this estimate came from, right? So they were letting it out.
Yep.
Exactly. Um, they are also, Wednesday morning, Jeanette and I are doing a little class at this point, at this point, because they've now declared it. And we need to move on with, um, the request for funding. We're doing a request for funding trail. Um, they have expedited. The FEMA is going to be coming back with office of emergency management, et cetera, the week of September sixteenth. They have purposely moved stuff up as much as they possibly can because. They have purposely moved stuff up as much as they possibly can, because the big concern with all of the towns is obviously winter.
Right.
So they're gonna come back, they're gonna look at everything that we've done. Um. Figure out what else needs doing, et cetera, and, and move forward from there. So I don't know what that means for funding at this point, hopefully we'll find out more, but maybe an expert will add a little bit. Sooner the better.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
I think that this is all, this is the liability, yeah.
Exactly. Yep. And but whatever we can get back through, through FEMA is gonna be huge to this little town.
Oh, for sure.
You know? I mean, we can spend this money, but it's coming from somewhere.
Right.
At the end of the day.
Now, you, you still got the, the one that, I forget the name, if they come and they kinda like supervise, say, oh, we need to block COVID, or, you know.
That will be something that Adam will work with as he's putting the road back together. They'll have to follow the guidelines of, uh, they're, with their here, uh, yes, as it's working. They're also gonna assign us, probably very soon, we will have, the town will have an assigned FEMA representative. So that will be directly working with the town, so, um.
Yeah, I think that'll start after the nine sixteen.
Yeah, and I think that's gonna really step new stuff along, hopefully. Um, so it sounds like they're really, they're really expediting as much as they can, and they're really trying to work with these towns and get this stuff done, so.
You're telling me that they get the funds that's gonna help us, then?
Well, I haven't directly said that.
Cause I, I heard on the news.
I'm sure they will, yeah.
That they're running out, and then when I go, oh my god.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you look at the disasters everywhere.
Oh, I know, that's all.
They're gonna have to come up with some, they're gonna have to come up with some more funding.
Yeah.
Here's what we're not prepared, you know? And you'll, and we'll probably know, we'll see a tax bill next year, but, but some way they gotta come up with more funding. I don't believe that they're gonna leave towns hung out.
No, it's just.
They will come up with money, it's just. They'll just have to come up with some money.
I mean, the law's still waiting for reimbursement from last year, so.
Yeah, it depends.
Um. What about the U S D A and the mitigation?
I haven't heard too much about.
I spoke with Matt, I had a, I had a follow-up meeting, uh, phone call with him last week. He went over some areas with Adam. Uh, there were additional areas that Adam and him did not go to that I mentioned. So I need to send him some information on that. And their thing really is based on the value of the property in which it's being protected by their work. So you have to reach a certain ratio in order for them to be able to do the work. So it shouldn't be an issue in some cases, but, or in most cases, but in some, it might be an issue. They're more of prevention, so, you know, and it may be something better for us to look at next year with them trying to utilize funds through them. Because once we get roads rebuilt where they were before the storm came, then they can come in and say, you need to do this so that what happened last summer doesn't happen this summer. They're more of a prevention mitigation, but we have to use FEMA in order to rebuild it to where it was. Right, which is like backwards.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's the government, so. I agree, yeah.
Yes, yeah, it's the government. Um, so whatever, so yeah, so Wednesday, Wednesday we're gonna do a virtual meeting, if you want in-person virtual works better for us. And it's just an application briefing, registration class that we're gonna do. Um, not that we can't fill out the form, without it, they just require that you do it. So I have to do it as the E N B and Jeanette should sit in on it, because it also, all this paperwork involves a lot of financial stuff in the town, so, um. Jeanette and I and Adam have worked pretty diligently on all this stuff and trying to keep track of everything in order that, you know. The, it's a, it's just a online virtual meeting on filling out the application. Basically, they're gonna tell us how to, how to do it out.
And so we're tracking how much it's been on each of our various locations, right?
Yeah, as best we can, it's, this is, almost this whole stack is just nothing but invoices. It's just invoices, and that's all gonna have to be broke down and justified to FEMA to get paid.
Yep.
That's where the work comes in.
Yep, and the other thing I remember them talking about is, um, a lot of the volunteer labor that we had, and like meals and things. That could be used as our cost share too.
Yep.
So we should be tracking all of that.
Well, the only thing that we have to take into consideration there is we did not open as an emergency center.
Okay.
So that may be or may not be usable.
Okay.
Just because we didn't have to open as a emergency center later. But it was supportive of the work, yes, and everybody was doing it.
They basically have this theory of put in everything, ask for everything, and then they'll just.
Tell you no.
Yeah, they'll be down to it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what he told us that day.
Exactly, and they'll make it in, and whatever. Um, obviously, obviously, we're not gonna get one point nine million dollars, but if we could get a big cost share of that, it would be, it would be huge.
If we get seventy-five percent of that, that would be really well.
Really huge, yeah, that would be really huge, so, um. See what happens, all we can do, I mean, I guess, you know, we can't, we can't look at it like they're out of money, we just, we gotta move forward and, right, and do it. Right, and all the great income, so, yeah, you have no choice, so that's all we can do. Um. So hopefully, hopefully, we'll keep moving down the road and, you know, it's just, like Jeanette said, it's government. You know, when you get into the government.
Yeah.
It's, 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 they're like paper. They like paper, um, so yeah, um. We'll see what they say when they come back, that could be pretty interesting. See what the improvements have been already.
That's next, that's next, uh.
September sixteenth, that week, they're gonna, she said it'd probably be at least a couple of days.
Yeah.
Involved in it, they're kind of blocked out that week for Lancaster, Willington, Dalton. And they're kind of, they're kind of doing all three towns together in a way, all of their separate there. When they come up to do it, anybody, so, um. I think, I think the excavator may be a huge plus. Being able to do stuff in a house, that's gonna be huge, I think, as opposed to the contractors, and nothing against the contractors, it's just.
It's actually saving the town money.
Yes, it's very expensive, and this, this will, yeah. This will give Adam control over what's going on, and it'll cut a lot of the money, and we can build, yeah.
Well, if they do the excavator, he can move up, up a road.
Exactly.
Who keeps reset himself?
Yeah, I, I think that would be, I think that would be huge.
Yeah.
I think that would be huge. We get those two young guys, they're C D Ls.
Yeah.
That would be good, um, because that class is, like Adam said, a whole entire summer or days a week. And I don't know how the Fire Department Academy cuts through it. The way that they do, but it's considerably shorter.
Yeah.
And it's paid for through the Academy, right? It's just huge, huge. So Adam's all, he's all set to do his, that was the same class, but. I mean, there's a little bit of work, we have to go out and drive with them, you know, they have to do ten hours of driving by a fire department authorized person with a C D L, but it's still very simple compared to going through a whole class and spending ten grand there. At the end of the day, so hopefully. The only, the only double-edged sword to that is that, and once they get their C D L, they become worth more. But, so then you'll have to look at that, but, um, so we did stress, we did stress that, understand the town is helping you to get this license, so therefore you need to.
Stick around.
Stick around for a little bit and be dedicated to the town at least for a while.
I told them five years, let them.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, that's a big bonus for them, and they owe us.
Yeah.
They owe us something for that, so hopefully that will work. Um, they seem like good kids, I don't know them that well, Adam knows more about it than I do.
I think, I think they'll, I think they'll be okay, you know, but we'll get them the C D Ls, that would be great. Yeah, that'd be a big plus.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, the fire departments are doing the same thing, we totally exempt, but most departments are pushing for C D Ls with anybody that drives the truck. It just gives you an edge on liability because you're licensed to drive the truck.
That's why I know.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, but through these courses, you know, I think that's why they're doing a lot of these classes. Is to get, it's mainly to get the fire departments up to C D L level. So that these people that are driving these fire trucks around there are so-called exempt by doing it with a C D L license.
Right.
That way, if something happens, you sort of, at least you're licensed to be driving that truck.
Yeah.
You know, so, and we can just take advantage of it, of course, they have to run on the fire department. So, yeah.
Nothing is free.
That's a bonus for us. That's a bonus for us, so, um, if you guys have any questions about stuff, I would say you can go to Jeanette. I pretty much have sent you everything that I have, vice versa. We're in communication all the time on this. Um. If you have questions, you should be able to, to answer them for you, I, I, I don't feel that I'm gonna go to three selectmen individually and fall on everything, but I keep Jeanette updated.
It wasn't set up that way.
And she can, she can fill you in on anything that, that you need to know, you should be able to, if she can't, then she knows where to come up with the information, so.
I remember I did, the, the, uh, the paperwork that went through is for the, the chair to be updated.
Yep.
Not, not all of us.
Yep.
You know, and then it will be brought to the board and whatnot.
It's very simple for, it's very simple for me, where she's part of this program, to just keep her updated, and then, like I said, she can she can keep you guys updated as to anything that's going on. So if you have any questions, I guess you can call, but, whatever, so.
Do you wanna go over this since you're here?
Um.
It's the grant application for the.
This is for the mitigation plan, that's all. And these are way behind, and they're way behind because of COVID. Um, so basically, we got a grant to redo the mitigation plan, and we've got approved, it's all set up. This is just the paperwork that just, basically, you have to sign off to receive the funding, that's all it asks to.
And maybe it's mitigation for.
It's the, it's the town mitigation plan.
Emergency mitigation.
It all has its mitigation, it's, it's an update to the plan is what it is. Yes.
Well, it's got two or three thousand dollar, it was gonna cost two or three thousand dollars to do or whatever.
Uh, this is, uh, the grant is eighty-three ninety-nine seventy, and the town has a portion here, but with the town portion, you can do in, um.
In kind hours.
In kind hours, basically, so when we do this plan, we'll have some people that will be part of it, and they get paid for their time, even though they don't, it goes toward. And the town shouldn't be out of pocket any money to approve the plan. So it's, yeah. Um, Julie Donald, um, through MAPS, uh, Twin Mountain does all these plans, she does them for every town that there is just about in the whole North Country, so we have contracted with her again to do it. They're just about impossible to do on your own and get through FEMA and get them approved, she knows how to, she knows how to do that. Um, so basically, I guess it's just a lot of little initials and signatures and, you know, right?
Yes, where you hi, you highlighted where it needs to go.
Actually, they did.
Oh.
Yeah. The state did. Um. So the first one is just the. A lot of their testing. Their test to sign off on this one, and then all of these little, all of these little, um, initial areas. I'm not sure, there's a little bit of a glitch here. Test that, so we can fill out all of this stuff. Um. You just have to put a name, and that has to be notedized. So the total project, yeah, the total project's nine thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars. So if you go through this, we can read all of this if you want. Um. So if you go through all this stuff, it's all pretty self-explanatory, but, um, basically, the selectmen are the acceptors of, of the grant.
And the grant is. The grant again is, did you say nine thousand and?
Yeah, and, uh, the total for doing the plan is nine, um, three, three, three.
Okay.
They're paying us eight.
Okay, cause we have a threshold that ten thousand dollars, we need to have a public hearing for unanticipated.
Yeah, this is under that. This is under that, um. How much would, uh, signature, signature is in front of? Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, signature. And then name and title. So you'd probably be the first one, name and title, the chairman, Select Board or whatever. There's a lot of signatures there. We can get that turned in and get that going, it'll be another, we're in the process of updating the emergency operating plan now, for doing that, turning it up pretty much, and that one.
Yeah.
Um. So.
There's a whole bunch of other pages, so.
Initials. We'll do the first page and then go through an initial, all this stuff. Emergency management stuff we go. You go two years and you do nothing, and then you go a year and it's constant, non-stop. It's just how it is. And then on the bottom, it has to be a initial, you know, space is probably to go. With those numbers. Yep. And then the pages go on, I think most of it's initials after them. Just seems, probably a bit rather than the initials in there. What would we have to do with? What would we have to do with? And then there's a lot of in there that basically the board's supposed to accept. The grant, that has to be, the minutes have to go in with it, stating that the board accepted the grant.
That the motion that we accept this plan towards the. Has a mitigation plan?
When, when is this supposed to start? Right on the ball, yeah, like all, all that.
Hi, your dad?
It'll be on her schedule, but she does like a, a big group to a time, and then another big group, yeah, to a time. They fell way behind from COVID.
Oh, yeah.
Um. We couldn't have the meetings and a lot of the virtual stuff didn't work out, and so they kind of fallen behind, but they're fine with that, so we just need to find them, you know? Get them updated again, that's all. Yeah. I guess a stamp wouldn't work, right?
She regards that.
Yeah, see. Actually, fall would be a great time to do this. The weather's crappy and, yeah, there's a bunch of evening evenings and whatever, so.
So deadline for completion?
What's that?
It's a deadline for completion?
Not really.
There's some time this year, or by the end of the year?
Yeah, it'd be done. You won't take it upset enough to then. They usually have a few nights where they like, the board maybe asks to come to a meeting, or a few of the meetings just to be part of it, so. And it's a good thing to know, yeah, it has to do with all the haz- hazard mitigations in the town, flood and plumbing, all that type of stuff, and that's just pretty good.
Having this in place for a lot of doing that and to move for the budget.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We are signed up for Wednesday morning. And welcome to see. It'll probably be really, really appealing and interesting.
I'm sure. I'm sure you're gonna have to work.
Yeah.
Put your coffee, kind of like a witch or anything, very.
Yeah, yeah, same idea, I'm sure.
Black in the circle.
Oh, my God.
All the way down, you have to search that.
I'm sure. Although, although Dave from FEMA was pretty cool. Yeah, he was a pretty cool guy. We talked a lot and talked to him and stuff. Yeah, yeah, he, he's a nice guy, yeah. You know, the one we couldn't understand. Yeah, he was, yeah. He had a hard time with that, but, you know, whatever, whatever. Yeah. Had a long day, yeah. And now we're gonna do it, now we're gonna do it in September, and over two days. I can just imagine. Just imagine, oh, yeah, I'm glad I'm, I call it sending tired, 'cause otherwise I'm not gonna have the time to be doing all that day after day. A lot to it. A lot to it.
Yeah.
Not notarized, which I can do that.
Does Eric need to sign that? Any candidacy?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure, unless, it's a notarized document. I think it's gonna, I would test that that is a true statement, and then notarize it. It's gonna be done by, over.
I don't know, that's kind of strange. They wanted to test it, they want the name and the title, and then they want it notarized. Yeah, I think that's the same. That's what she did for the authority. You sign and put your title in that line, or it says a test, 'cause it says, "I further attest," so he's a testing.
Can you notarize?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. That saves a lot of issue. If they want something else, they'll let us know. It'd be pretty easy to work on it. Pretty easy, and I think all the old ones are back, right? Yeah, it's crazy. Excellent. So that I have, the only thing I see is a phone number here, somebody sent the.
Yes, and I'll do that.
So you can put that into the town?
Yep.
Excellent. And my, and my, and my, same thing going there, but if I do. Another big deal, may notarize that and split it down.
I'm sure you'll be buying tomorrow.
Yep. Yep, and send it to them, then.
Yep.
It would be good, and then get some meetings set up and that, so, all right, I think, unless you guys have anything else.
Hopefully, but.
Just leave them forward at this moment, and hopefully we can, hopefully it works out.
Yeah.
If that were all this.
Ron, did they authorize that person to reach out?
What's that?
Did they authorize, you authorized that person to reach out? To, no? Go back?
No.
None. There's your answer. It's impersonating. It's fraud.
Yeah, I was just, I just, like I said, I just kept that email and it's kind of like, okay. So, um, I would say, like I said, if you want me to do it, I'll do it, and keep it to the E M D, so that it's one person that's feeling that many. If it doesn't look good at this moment, you don't proceed.
It's also fraud, impersonating a town official.
Yeah, you're, uh, actually, you're doing a good job of what you're doing, I appreciate that. Just, uh, you know, I know you're kind of, uh, but the, uh, paperwork that was passed a while back, that the chair should, uh, be included in on that, so.
Just, hey, well, 'cause we never passed that, that document, we never passed it. It was put out, but it was never passed.
Oh, yeah, it was.
No.
Anyways.
I mean, we talked about, you know, and we, I think you do a good job with keeping the board as a whole, 'cause we should all be doing our force into this as a board.
Yeah, wow.
One individually.
Yeah, exactly, and I guess.
I don't have a problem with that either, but they were just making it easier on him. He said they didn't want to have to call you, call you, call me, call, you know.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I can do whatever, I just think it's easier to just, I mean, you have a town administrator, you're paying to do that, so it just, you know, it makes more sense for you to deal with town administrator.
It's in my job description.
Exactly, yeah.
And she has to be crackled.
It's just simple for us, and then, and then, like I said, we kept Adam in the loop, and, you know, so everybody's kind of in the loop here, so. That's what we important about it is, yeah, so, that's what we forgot when I had him was here, the boiler at the highway garage.
Waiting on prices to come back.
Oh, yeah, and who, who could actually do it? Oh, my God, it's like.
Just like everything else, you can't get prices on anything. They come out, they look at it, they talk to you, they say, "Well, send a price," they don't send a price. You have to chase them for it, so.
The people that used to do them don't install them anymore. They'll service them, but they don't install them, 'cause they don't have any help.
No.
And it's just like, I don't know, I'm glad we got the one in the fire station when we did, and that's a fairly new one, but, yeah, you, you can't, you can't find anybody to do anything anymore.
Nope.
It's just crazy.
Glad we got the one in this building, but.
Yeah.
It was a couple of years ago.
It's crazy, it's just crazy, everything, no matter what it is. If it's hard work, you can't get it done, so. Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Back to older.
Did I suicide the truck?
Well, we already did that, and I'll probably go time to play.
Well, this is an update. Their board approved us, approved our, um, membership into it, so it starts effective nine-one. They're setting up our accounts, and then they'll get in touch with me as far as training goes, and, and I'll work with municipal resources who does our payroll, and we'll take care of it. So, just an update.
You want us to broaden? Any update on that?
None further right now, no.
So what if we get emails about B E A, which sounds like it overlaps, is it the same?
That's a different, that, the B E A is dealing with a secondary grant that is out, uh, for the different commercial groups to be applying or bidding on in regards to expanding the costs, uh, well, expanding the fiber optic system. And right now, that process is where they've opened it up for, for those that are currently, won the awards for Coas County. They are now, uh, putting in their paperwork regarding that piece. And then any corporation that provides the same service that wishes to challenge it is filing for that. So that's nothing that we need to be a part of, that's a process that they're doing to avoid the additional monies, so that more work can be done to cover fiber optic.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't take any areas, maybe?
Come on, you.
We haven't, I haven't done anything on that, so it's a storm. That's the station I'm working on.
Do you know when we'll have something on that? So we can look at when we start doing budgeting?
I'm gonna be in touch with you on that, 'cause I need some clarification. Is that one of the rules of procedure?
No one's given any comments on it.
I'll do that. All of these fifteen feet?
We never received anything from Casella.
Want to stay right on?
No update?
I don't think that's gonna be concerning us in any way, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have much to say about it. N C C transportation improvement point?
They're supposed to be having a meeting in September to score the projects that were submitted.
Any fuel contracts?
Um, I never heard back from Rhymes. C N Brown came back with a oil price of three point zero five nine per gallon, which is fifty cents less per gallon than Rhymes gave us. They haven't given me anything as far as propane goes yet. They have to come and do a site inspection, and them and Adam have not coordinated yet, so.
Should we proceed to blocking in the fuel oil at this point?
I would say, I'm gonna do someone that sounds out of the way.
I think the motion that we go with C N Brown, the fuel oils, the measure.
Second that.
Three point zero five nine gallons per gallon.
That wasn't a paper? The Kelson Parkson?
No update.
That's all for the presentation?
They can't do the sixteenth, they asked to come on the thirtieth.
Community power presentation?
They're coming on the sixteenth?
Resolution of municipal transportation improvement fee?
We talked about this at one of the last meetings, about adding a municipal transportation improvement fee to all of the vehicles that are registered. The select board can vote to put that fee in place, it does not have to go to town meeting. Are we gonna do anything with that, or? So that was five dollars per registration? Yes.
I'm not sure what to do with that.
Do we wanna have a, a bit of any feedback, or any criticism?
Yeah, I think we should give some feedback, but we need to figure out, I think we should give some feedback on it.
So how do you want to obtain that feedback?
I'm not sure.
You could put a, for, um, in fact, a email there, or we could have a discussion of, that'll look a new future meeting.
Yeah, and let it be known that there's gonna be discussion on that, like, put some feedback on it.
Could we notice on the website? Should we ask for feedback from people that are here?
That's a good idea. Um, you should repass that. You wanna summarize it to them?
Sure. So based on RSA two sixty-one colon one fifty-three, Roman numeral six, a town can add a municipal transportation fee to all registrations to help pay for road maintenance and repair in the town. So, it puts five dollars on vehicles each registration, so those who have more vehicles obviously pay more. If you don't have a vehicle, you don't pay at all.
What, what does it benefit the town roughly? Like, what, do you have an estimate on what that would, and how that would benefit?
I don't know, I, I, I mean, I don't know exactly how many vehicles we registered last year. My guess would be it's gotta be three to four hundred, so you're looking at ten to twelve thousand dollars a year.
Not state roads, back roads, correct?
Correct, these are just town roads.
Hundred, not thousand.
Sorry. So, sorry.
It's okay. Late.
Been a long day.
Late, yeah. So the impact on the town is really not huge, a little bit, a little bit of help, but.
So that could have the escalator, right, that's twenty-six thousand a year?
No, if you did, no, I was wrong, it was, it would be twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, not twelve.
Not twelve thousand.
Oh.
Yeah. Right, so it's not really a huge help for the town.
But every little bit helps, and if you put it in a fund, you know, 'cause right now, we're, if, if that capital reserve fund for paving wasn't worded the way it is worded,
Couldn't use it.
We couldn't use it, so, I mean.
Personally, I don't have a problem with it, but I think that there may be some people that squawk about another five dollars being added to their, to their bill, so.
I agree. Of course, there's also people who could win the lottery and then squawk that they have to pay taxes, so it just depends on how you look at it.
So, should that be saying that it would be a compromise if they don't use it?
Correct.
Correct. So would you think that?
But I assume we would probably use it.
Probably still the estimated one.
Maybe.
I mean, even though we don't have it, it's how many, it's something to be crucial to how many, either.
That's true.
It might be better to let the town go on it, just because it may only be five dollars a vehicle or registration, but it seems to be like those are the, the little things that make you, that get everybody angry, get everybody wound up, because they gotta pay another something for something. So, maybe that's a good item to add to the.
And article too, make, we can have an article where we can start a fund for, for road repairs for, you know, emergencies or whatnot.
Well, that's what this would be.
Well, then it would be like, you'd.
Deviated to that.
We've got articles to add to that. That would satisfy.
Oh, you're saying that as a separate issue, not use this five dollars, not ask for five dollars, but you're saying just have a, an art, a warrant article, or set aside just for the roads?
Yeah.
And, and we could, we could do both, too. And, and we could, we could do both too. I mean, where we could have it as two warrants, but one to set up a fund for road repair and put a hundred dollars in it, and then second one could be do a lot to have this municipal transportation improvement fee.
I think they're good questions to be presented to the town.
Yeah, I think she's right.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm talking about. Are you starting to lose the warrant articles or?
No, waiting till after the two elections that are coming this year first, or start with the next year, so.
So we should have the board study the numbers before that?
I.
Question I have, she thinks.
We talked about it, but no one ever, they're unhappy there for each of you, no one ever?
I think we changed it.
You did?
Yeah.
But it was never discussed, is what I'm saying. So, we talked about it, but never finalized it, is what I'm trying to say.
So, other than a couple of minor changes, the major changes are, um, we'll be doing a section on employees who require training certification. And this would be adding this section and doing employees who require participation in training, flash registration programs directly related to their town's office are eligible to earn up to their full salary for the time spent in said training or certification program. Eligibility shall be determined by their supervisor, for example, at the discretion of the road agent and to see supervisor and company. Highway department employees may be paying their standard hourly rate for their participation in CBL training and testing. And employees receiving this visit that are expected to successful to receive that training certification, new employment with a town adult, and then two years after. And so the other addition was because we have, going to the state retirement, adding a paragraph of that seventeen retirement benefit. Full-time employees are eligible for participation in the current state retirement system through the HIRF and SNCs. The town and employee contribution rate is determined by state law and may change over time. The town administrator will provide information to employees that will facilitate enrollment of the town. And I believe in terms of our select board procedures, we should review changes and approve them at a meeting.
Let us get in here.
We should review the changes and then actually approve them at a subsequent meeting. So. At the next meeting, at the next meeting, so, is this language, you know, we, we talked about paying employees for their training?
Yeah.
Without language? Acceptable?
Yeah.
And then adding paragraph of retirement benefits?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look through this, we can, and we can look at the other as well. I'd say, I haven't taken time to look at those yet, and I, I really want to look at it a lot closer, I, I like a lot what was being said, and I'm gonna look at it closer.
Okay. Okay, we got this, a couple of weeks ago, we looked at the video.
Yeah, well, we're all busy too.
Well, I know, I am as well.
Yeah.
So you're gonna come back with additional comments next Monday?
It's, it's clear that they made on it, I mean, I'm gonna leave it over.
And we've got, how do employees, so that we take the training, and we should get those in place, so they can take advantage of it. So those are, we could always come back and change other things in the policy a later date. So if we could agree on these changes, then we could act on them at the next meeting and.
Yeah.
Update the policy at the end of that. Would you feel free to do that?
Yeah, we can look at it for next Saturday and, and yeah, next meeting again, the next Saturday, let's get this done.
Hopefully we're not meeting next Saturday.
That's awful.
Okay. So the legal firm interview, I went to set those up, and then I started to look at it, and I don't, it, sorry, I added it to, I added it at the last minute, because I had questions on it. So, I don't know if those are supposed to be public meetings or non-public meetings, are they? Okay, so I.
That's, that's the question I have, I would have to myself, could ask, I got that question. Because I don't know.
I mean, I, I would assume it. I don't know necessarily if it would be a, I don't even know if it would necessarily be a meeting.
Exactly. I think that's the question you could ask, and it's like, oh.
Okay, okay.
Well, seeing how you brought that up, I took the liberty and I, I called NHMA about this, because with the minutes and everything, and you come, and you called it moot, and I wasn't sure what you mean by that, so I got to look at it all over and, and talking about it. In the minutes, we're definitely not moot. It's very clear on what, what was stated, on, on what we wanted to, to do in, in the minutes, and so, so we're talking with NHMA, I said, do we, do we have to, do we, I told him, check in what happened, do we have to end you? He said, no, I never heard such thing, you, you, you made a motion to seek, I said, yeah, the chair is doing that, and, and he says, then you bring it before they, the board, and you make a motion to what you want, and that's what it's all about, you're seeking new, new legal. So I got thinking about it, and I said, because you put Mitchell Group in there, we're not, that's not new legal. So with that, with that said, with what I asked to talk, what I talked to him about, I want to rescind Eric's motion for Upton and Hatfield, and Mitchell Group, and Drummond and Woodson, Woodson to come in. I want to rescind that. And I want to move forward, because we wanted, and I also found out that these, Upton and Hatfield and Drummond are part of NHMA recommendation.
They were listed on their website under their vendor, which I said that that needed.
Yeah.
But.
So I, I wanna, I want to read openness to the motion that Eric made to, oh, wait a minute, I'll be back up. I want to rescind this, so I make a motion to rescind this motion for Upton, Hatfield, Mitchell Group, and Drummond, Drummond, Woodson to come in, I make a motion to rescind that. Do I have a second on that? I'll second it then.
So, we, we had a quick discussion at our last meeting about this.
I know we did.
And I think there are some questions that need to be asked of these firms before we, we jump in. For example, we have some things that we named university this year, and we want to make sure that those entities aren't already clients with them, or that they don't have a conflict of interest. I believe that Eric wanted to go with Upton and Hatfield because they don't have any clients up in the North Country.
Yeah, there's some lies on the.
But I, I, I have to ask, if we go to court, we go to court in Coles County, at Lancaster, so wouldn't we want somebody who's familiar with the court up here?
Why would we want to go with somebody that's like Beth Brown? She does Whitefield, Wilton, not Wilton, Bethland, Whitefield and Lancaster up here.
Well, I think we, I mean, I think we want a good reputable municipal firm. I just have some questions to ask these firms before we go with them.
I'm sure.
To make sure they don't have a conflict of interest with some of our issues, and Jan is a tax collector, most of our legal last year were tax collectors, except. Jay is our moderator, he's our election official, he may have questions for them. And I think that just, will make us help us make a better choice of the select board.
Well, is there anything else you want to add to that?
We had somebody here that wanted to ask a question. Have you asked them for whether or not they're gonna charge mileage rates to come up here to do any legal, because that can impact the cost of the town? There are some places that do that. I just asked and he acknowledged, I know, and I had my, I'm talking with them.
I'm just trying to point out what they couldn't see.
Yeah.
Well, when Pam left, Diane was talking, and nobody said anything.
You were talking too, so.
Well, she told me I couldn't.
Can we have point of order, please? This is the boarding discussion, we have, we have talked with it, about it, and I'm, and I, and I feel the same way that it's time for, because there, we have residents that were concerned about some stuff, and it's time for some new eyes on, on the situation, so. So, with that said, I, I continue that motion, I want to make a motion to accept that motion to rescind that. All in favor?
I think. You know, chair, they called them both.
All right.
And I'd like to reiterate that I thought we had a quick discussion last time, and that we have decided that we would investigate three firms in more detail and to be familiar.
So the question was asked but never answered. If these, if this firm is located downstate, how do you justify paying extra funds for them to come up here every time we need them? They have confirmed that?
Yeah.
What about the time?
It's two thirty an hour.
I think it's.
And, and they're gonna pay, you're gonna have to pay them from the time they leave their office till they get here, and then from the time they leave here till they get back to their office. And they're located where?
Long Island.
Just two hours away, so you're paying four hours of travel time, two hundred and thirty dollars an hour.
Is that a fact? So, most of the, you tend to do things virtually, like.
Yeah, and not only that, they have, they have, you know, if you have some serious thing where the lawyer has to be here, there's that price, and then if, if there's a.
Paralegal.
A paralegal, you only get, you only get the hundred and something an hour, and it's, and it's still a whole lot cheaper than the one we have now.
What do we pay now?
So.
I think we know.
Well, what I, what you guys have been telling me is three hundred dollars an hour.
We don't pay three hundred an hour.
So that's where, I think that the motion that was raised at the last meeting and approved is a good one, because we compare the rates for the different, we give some more information, we find out what their client list is, because to make sure we don't have a conflict of interest.
I know, I've, I've already talked to them.
But had you asked them if they have a conflict of interest, if we negotiate a host community agreement with Casella?
Yeah.
We didn't tell us that. See, I think we have, as a board, we have some good questions to have, things like that, I mean, all you said was, you know, they have just clients down in the southern part of the state. I would like to know if they're, you know, that they have some familiarity with the Coles County court system, because that's where our cases would go. You know, the Mitchell firm does, they may. I'd like to know their depth, too, how many of their attorneys are municipal law attorneys? These are big firms that have other divisions as well. So I, and I think there's just more questions to be asked, if we don't have to have them here, we can do a virtual meeting. But if we're more comforted with, with going with another firm, we're gonna have questions answered.
If this, if this turn, hypothetically, if this turned out that it wasn't good, we can always make a motion to, to relook again if we had, had to, but I, I don't believe that's, that's, that's a specialty, so I, I.
Well, and same with, with the Gromit, and same with municipal.
Yeah.
We mentioned municipal group, so, you know, at least they're all respected municipal attorneys. I mean, I think with the, the Woodson group, they have more depth in terms of where municipal ventures were gathered, so maybe we should go with them instead of Upton and Hatfield. But I, I really would want to make sure that we're not gonna run into a conflict of interest with other clients pretending to have. That was, that's a big concern of mine.
Thank you, Eric. Just a point for the board to consider, thought there was a really thoughtful discussion earlier when you looked to all of us in regards to the five dollar additional fee, and really thoughtful comment about, you know, let's put it to the voters, because the voters, that way there, there's, there's no discrepancy. It allows people to have their say and not feel like they were left out. Just my comment on this is that I've heard all of these discussions along the way, I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know if you're choosing the right one or the wrong one, but it hasn't appeared to be as thoughtful as that discussion. And that's all, that would be my only point, is that just from an appearance standpoint, how we keep it above board and everybody feels like it's a thoughtful discussion. So just a comment, thank you.
It may be thoughtful, but it is no real business. They're, they're choice. They are our select board, and they're represented, and I think, and they make sure they should be willing to have us listen to their discussions on different options. And I don't see what, what the harm is in doing one of these.
I don't see what the problem is in changing a law firm if, if it's beneficial to the town.
But we don't know that.
We don't know. Well, what, what is the problem with investigating another, having another law firm?
That's what, that's what, we're at a problem, we have to engage you. That's what, meet with them and talk with them to make sure it's a good thing. So five years ago, when we went with the Mitchell, the Mitchell Group, we did meet with them, and you had the moderators sit in and choose as well. And that, at that point, we had a very new board, and we may not have, but it would have been a good idea to have the moderator involved. I would ask you.
It's just the board meeting, I think the board should handle it.
But it's our tax. But it's our tax dollars that are paying for these attorneys, so I think it's important that you allow discussion on it. Shut up, worm. That nickname, worm.
Any more discussion on that?
Kathy? I would like to thank the board to at least listening to all of us, but I would like to ask that people not start speaking to each other when we're all trying to talk with the board. I think interrupting others as they're putting their voice forward is very inappropriate, and anybody responding to it is inappropriate. And I'd ask that everybody treat each other with respect and kindness. Thank you.
All right, well, that said, thank you very much, Bea, but, and continuing on rescinding, and I say hi. And I'd like to open the motion that Eric had, that we hire Upton and Hatfield as our new legal, that Eric be in touch with them to work out the logistics on switching from one to the other. One second.
I still say, I, I don't have confidence that we've asked all the questions we should ask to make some decisions. You know, we should look at Woodson, the other firm as well. I mean, I don't have confidence that we're making an informed decision to type through questions that I would be interested by anything involved in this process.
All in favor? All right.
Yeah.
Well, we went, I got one other thing that has to be done, 'cause you, you, you buy the conservation.
Can I look back up on that one thing? So I don't think we went past that yet.
We didn't pass it.
We're still on go of old business. You're, are you comfortable negotiating all this, or do you want somebody to be with you on negotiating?
What kind of question I've been working with you?
It's a question she's asking the chair.
Point and border, guys. Let's, let's the select board do their job.
I feel fine talking, but I get them.
And, and then translating the information back so we can understand it?
Of course, I'm in it, Bea.
Well, we're both. Because I'm finding, like, what you told us about this, your conversation before, left out some pieces of light that were important. So, you know, if you're not comfortable, it's all Peter, Ben, and the other friends that are on this side, I'd be happy to help out. And we need to close it up in meeting, and.
Well.
Committee updates? If we're done with the legal firm goodies?
You don't want to hear?
No updates.
Conservation, please? Yeah, I, uh, I went to the conservation, uh, meeting that was held, for us like, and they voted to, to, uh.
Which one?
That would be August 2nd. Minutes here. And, uh, the motion was made to check in on the, to, uh, the shoreline impact, to write a, an appeal on that.
Or?
Motion was, a motion was made, I think, to approve John Swan submitting the appeal document to the National Wetlands Council. Motion seconded by Carol. All voted yes, except myself. I voted against it.
So they, I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying, 'cause you kinda jumped around. They voted to submit an appeal document for the shoreline application?
Yeah.
That Casella was awarded? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all, it's all in this paper.
And you're just mentioning it, or you wanna discuss?
No, I got more to go with it, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
And then we go on to, this is, uh, this is actually the, uh. So they sent that in, and this was the application, and it was, uh, it was, it was denied, and then, uh.
What was denied, the repeal?
Yeah. And then they said that they had a, another, uh, you have 25 days to appeal the decision, but they denied it. And Mr. Swan had read it and got another one filled out, which is fine, but in that, find it here. All right, yeah. They reviewed and approved those minutes, and they made a motion and, uh, to, to go forward with an appeal, and it was approved by all. And my name was, I wasn't, I wasn't at that meeting, so it was not approved.
What meeting was that?
That was, uh, June 18th meeting.
So it was, I'm confused, 'cause.
The conservation meeting.
This is June, you're going backwards?
I'm going back with this.
If you want.
I get myself confused, so I thought I had it, so I get out. Well, it was, just boiling down to the fact, the, it was denied, and he, and he's going to, I think I lost the paper, what the friend I did. ML, I don't know what it was. Give me a second. Well, I'm gonna have to make, oh, here. He appealed to a GSL, GSL application, and he's doing it, he's doing it on behalf of the board, and this is gonna cause, what's gonna happen is this is gonna cause a, um, a possible, uh, the town being sued or getting the town in trouble.
He's doing what on, on?
I don't know, I ain't trying to, let me try.
Under which board?
Okay. August 12th, it was, it's fine. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, HDS, DES, received the PNA file by you on behalf of Dalton Conversation Commission on or about August 5th. And HDS denies the offer to enter into a settlement discussion on this matter. And it continues on, uh, oh, let's see, uh, he, uh, let's see, wait. Notice of appeal that compiled fully with the council rule shall be filed no later than 45 days after the preliminary notice of the appeal was filed by the appellant under RSA. No notice of appeal shall rise grounds for appeal beyond those contained in the preliminary notice of appeal. For your convenience, I have imposed a fact sheet about the appeal process, blah, blah, blah. Then he re, he did his appeal. He reset, reached, filled out his appeal right here, addressed, and, Constitution of the United States. I don't know where it's somewhere, but this is gonna get us in trouble, because. I'm gonna pick it up, what's that, where that, that you got?
They make highlighters.
I don't know, I think I, I dropped the paper at home. I'm gonna have, but I, what I'm gonna have to do, 'cause I can't finish explaining myself, I wanna make a motion that this, this application does not get sent on behalf of Dalton, because furthermore, the, the whole Dalton, uh, is not on board with us. So I make a motion that you do not send that until I get the paperwork and have legal look at this to make sure, so that it can't come back on us.
So we have the select board don't control the conservation?
Yeah, we don't, no.
You know, you're gonna need, because it's all, and.
There are things that, yeah, anyways, it has, it could be an issue, and I make a motion that we do not let this go through until, until either legal or, you know, I'll get back with some more information so I can explain this with them, if you understand it.
Do we know that he is not using town legal for this? We haven't authorized him to use town legal for this yet. Yes, we know. Thanks. You're welcome.
So I made a motion for that to not go through, not to be sent.
Mute.
Well, until that meeting, I, on behalf of the, of the board, I'm letting you know that we have no power of, if this comes back and sues the town, the board has no power in what you're doing. That's what you get when you go to sleep at 4:00 in the morning and then you get up at 5:00 and, anyway, sorry about the, uh, I screwed up on that, but I'll get back to you in a minute. I left all my notes, I hold on point of board. I don't have any updates.
I have a couple planning board members here.
I, I can say that we had a subdivision that was approved on Faraway Road, um, that had gone through the process, um, and I don't think there was, I think there was one or butter that was asking about it, and asking about hunting and stuff, and what his concerns were, but I think he was satisfied with it, and he didn't seem to have any problem with it, and it was something that was approved. Can't remember their name.
Hebert.
Hebert, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There was an application submitted for a campground on Bleachley and Simon's Roads by a company called Under Canvas, and it may take them a couple of months or so to get more detailed plans, and at that time, then a public hearing can be scheduled. Was there another? Seems like there was another one.
What was the one from Horizon? Where he did the, redid the roads?
Redid the roads?
Oh, made them darker?
Oh.
Was that the subdivision?
That, that was the one on Faraway Road.
Okay.
Yeah. Seems like there was another one.
What is that, I talked about the private matter?
Oh, that gentleman, yeah.
The one building a house?
It was a private right of way issue that wasn't for us to.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Sorry, I did bring some notes from that.
See, I didn't either, I was just scribbling them down in the last 10 minutes, so.
But, I mean, well, I haven't, I don't have any agreement with the rest of the planning board members, but, but I do think that, um, I don't know how the cost of roads and emergency services, I don't really understand how that gets put on the town, except do they just pay regular taxes? Or, you know, if there's road improvements, I don't.
In a subdivision, you mean?
No, it's not.
Talking about the campground.
Yeah, it's, yeah, not subdivision. Yeah, it's like, you know, I don't know if the town can protect itself from us having to pay, um, essentially for them the profit. So like, if their taxes don't cover the additional cost of maintenance on the road or additional cost of.
Wasn't it one of the agreements that they were willing to, to do the road?
Yeah, they, they made a comment that.
They, they sound like that they are, I just don't know how legally we can ask them certain things, and I did call.
Is it a private road, or are they talking about improvement?
No, we're talking about lightweight and big hill.
Yeah.
Possibly, because the amount of traffic coming through.
So in the past, where we've had, neither legal, we've had, when I was way in with the planning board, I come back and the select board and ask for permission to contact legal to, to get more clarification on the issues, like you did that with the subdivision, um.
We're not ready, yeah, but this is just.
So just get that in mind, but.
Coming up now, yeah.
Get legal advice about how we can word the agreement to make sure they're covering the, the, for the goal, and for that.
And I did check out the pilot program, which is, what does it mean again?
Paying, payment.
Paying what taxes? And this particular, uh, this would, it would not apply to this one. It doesn't, you have to be certain, there's certain things that have to go into it for it in order to have a pilot.
So they're gonna have to pay the taxes?
Well, they're gonna have to pay the taxes, but if the taxes, like, let's, if the, um, I mean, if the, let's say that, that it was valued at $2 million. If it's valued at $2 million, then our municipal taxes are only like $6,000 for them? You know, you, well, you always have to take a look when, when you're paying tax, we talk about the tax rate in Dalton, but we really have to concentrate on the tax rate for, for municipality, because that's the money that comes to us. And, and, yeah, it's just, it's like, whoa, if we have, um, you know, if they have another 100 cars on the road per day versus what do we have now, 20? I mean, I don't even know, and, and I'll, then, I just don't know that something like $5,000 a year in taxes is gonna pay for that, and then, so that's why I thought about the pilot program, but then I would put that in the stuff and qualify.
And those, that potential tax revenue is split between the town, the county, and the school.
Right.
Yeah, well.
And the town will get a big amount.
Yeah, essentially, if it were valued at $2 million, then they would be charged close to $40,000, $40,000 a year in taxes, or $38,000, of which only about $6,000, under $6,000 would come to the town. I don't, I don't know, maybe $6,000 is a lot for a road, I did something, so, you know, and I don't think that this is just kind of, I'm throwing this out there for you guys, just because if.
Gonna have to look at it.
Well, I don't know if we can or can't look at it, but, but if so, we need to start thinking about it now, not after, not next year.
Like Phil Bev was saying, come back to the board and get, ask legal.
The other thing is, we do have, I mean, I, both of your board members, they wanna take the, um, hardboat travel training, I put that book, connect, if it's in without toll, to tell me, I don't recall without looking at it, his questions addressed me or not, without the starting, like, something I feel that is definitely.
And, and this company, I don't think it's gonna be hard to work with, I just don't know what we can or cannot. know what we can or cannot ask them.
And this is a book that you said that, yeah?
The book will be one step, it's a hard road travel, it's a guide for road vehicles, you may have a little bit of solicitor information, we have to go back to it, but then I think we're gonna need them to provide us at some point, and so, this is coming back, and then there'll be a public hearing and it'll eventually, right?
Yeah, so we're gonna get back to us with more, more revised plans, um, more detailed plans, and that is, I think, and.
Yeah, um, it, if they have to meet all the state RSAs, we have a.
Right.
A few things that they more than meet our requirements for our town.
Yeah, yeah, they have to look into septic and water, and.
Poisoning.
Yeah, they've gotta look into that first and comply with all the state standards, and I think at that point, maybe that's when they get all those permits and everything, and then they can probably give us plans, more definitive plans.
This is in their one hour.
Uh, haven't heard anything on it? I do have something on that, um. So we've been getting emails about, um, encouraging people to, to write to the, the governor and the Public Utility Council, because, um, there's going to be meetings talking about net metering, which applies to solar, so net metering is where, if you produce extra energy, these folks have to provide it for you, and so that's part of our cost benefit calculation, and, um, so there's been a, a docket on the Public Utilities Committee regarding changes to the current net metering tariff structure, and I'll just read what I drafted, something based on what I've read, all got in all emails too, um, so the dear governors and members of the Public Utilities Commission, we understand that the New Hampshire PUC will release an order concerning PUC docket DE twenty-two dash zero six zero on changes to the current net metering tariff structure. We also understand that settlement agreement has been filed by the three investor-owned electric, tier electric utilities, Clean Energy New Hampshire, Conservation Law Foundation, C L F, the Office of the Consumer Advocate, O C A, and the New Hampshire Hydro Corporation. As a small town in northern New Hampshire, we're limited budget, we currently, we recently, we recently committed a grant application for the installation of solar panels to generate electricity for our municipal building. These utilities utilize net metering as a critical part of our calculation in investing in solar energy, therefore, under the Dalton Flatboards, each arm leaders need to accept the settlement agreement. The clerk of the PUC has copied on this email, so our concern and recommendation to accept the settlement agreement will be entered into the docket. So this would be, this is my, you know, I, I drafted this so we could pack on it, because I think it'll come in due date by the thirtieth of August. If you, I, this supports the current net metering structure, but if your facilities want to change it so, we'd be advantageous to have renewable use. So as a board, I'd like to make a motion that we submit these comments as drafted to the governor and to the Public Utility Council to support the current net metering structure.
I'm sorry, yeah, so, let me ask a question here first, net metering, it means, is the extra that's made, they have to buy it back?
Correct.
That's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely, would you just accredit? You, it would offset if we, our, our utility use, when we, we've got clarification that on an annual basis, if we have produced more energy than we've used, we would give, could get the money or credit, yeah, not cash, to cash out, basically, so.
You mean, you could cash out once a year? Just cash out?
Yeah.
That wasn't paid though?
All right. And what I also had a, that you know, was that, if you could add this to the motion, is that the August nineteenth, the board meeting, the board voted to allow the county administrators to natural on just this comment and recommendation on behalf of the board to draft them a petition, and we did that.
Can you, once that's done, can you send it out for us?
So.
A copy?
Yeah, and I, I would suggest that we copied on it and sent, and we'll, we'll pass it on.
But today's not the nineteenth, today's the twenty-sixth. Today's the twenty-sixth.
Did I have the date wrong?
Yes, you had August nineteenth.
Thank you.
That's what I was saying.
That's when you wrote it, the nineteenth?
That's when you wrote it, that's right.
I said, I wrote it this afternoon, and I'm not sure when I wrote it. I tried to write it before the meeting.
Hey, don't care at all, I, it's been a bad week period.
Boy, my head.
Yeah.
So I'll, if I notice, if I forget, email it to you, um, whoever else, if I need, you don't have to retype it.
Hmm?
Yeah, okay.
Or I'll just retype it.
In New Hampshire, doing diesel grant, all that?
Um, so the Clean Diesel Grant Program was, we were supposed to have that completed by September thirtieth of this year, obviously, we don't have a truck yet, so they're asking for an extension, or they're asking us to sign for an extension, um, so I've signed for the grant, they're asking me to sign the extension that I need to send to them. Um, I have not received comments back from D R A regarding the warrant article that passed for a new, a replacement truck, and still we need to go back from there on that. So, again, this extends the grant so that we can still accept the money, if we decide that we don't want to accept the money, then we just decide at that time that we're not taking the money, because I know that that's in question. I got your email, you want all copies of all the grants that I've submitted, I don't know why, but I haven't gotten to it yet, so. Copy of all the grants, you can put it in the office when we're done.
Yeah, okay, I can do that too.
Yeah.
I just wanna drop you, so I can.
And I'm just.
They, the thing is that what I'm learning is they, they're supposed to be posted for other, to get a look at it.
Grant?
Yeah, no.
No. I mean, they're, they're, they're public, pub, like, just like everything, anything, you can come in and say, hey, can I see a copy of this? And then I can say, yeah, or I can, if I'm not sure, then I'll say, I'm not sure, let me check.
Okay.
Because I don't, the last thing I wanna do is make something available that shouldn't be made available to people, and sometimes people get frustrated that I question what they're asking for, but it's better to be safe than sorry, in my opinion, so.
No, and I'm, I'm okay with that, that's fine.
Yeah, I am happy to follow it.
Okay.
Um, so I just wanna, I guess, ask for the board to motion that I extend it to September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. You just said we'll extend it for a year since we're not sure, I mean, unless we heard the truck would be available in October, but then it has to be retrofitted so that we can actually use it, so. Did I hear that Adam is reconsidering that particular model? Yes. What's just the.
Because there's, there's a lot of them that are broken down, signed over all the time.
Yeah, yeah, so, and that is why, in speaking with Adam, he was asking about the warrant and the election, like, the town meeting where it was elected, and this, and the excavator, and how can we, because he's saying, I can go get a good truck, used, and, and the excavator, and not spend three hundred thousand dollars, why can't we do that? And I said, Adam, you absolutely can, but at the time that this grant came out, I asked Bob, Bob was the road agent, and he said, yeah, go for it, and that's why we went for it.
Yeah, right.
But now you're saying, hey, I don't really know if I want this truck because other people have it and it's not reliable, and I think that's an extremely valid reason not to accept it. So if we can get out of accepting the truck, which I think we can, and, and deny taking the funds, which we can, because. Even if we do the extension, we still. Even if we do the extension, we can still not accept the funds, we could, it's, it's all just sending them a letter, hey, this is what happened, this is how things rolled out, we're not, we're not taking the grant funds, it's not the end of the world, we're not forced.
And we're not taking the truck, does that work that way, like, if you say no to the grant funds, can you also say no to the truck as easily as, you know, like?
I believe so, but I don't, I didn't sign anything, so I don't know if Bob signed anything.
So maybe we've got.
So I don't believe that we are required to take the truck, because I'm sure there are other municipalities who are saying, oh, I'm not gonna get it till June of twenty twenty-five, oh, now you have one available, so.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
Probably should, it should be a problem.
Probably not, but I don't wanna go to the dealer and say, hey, I don't think we want the truck, until Adam says, we absolutely don't want the truck.
And Adam is pretty smart, what he's doing, that guy knows his truck, he knows his equipment, he, the guy, the, he, we, we are, we are fortunate to have him on board here.
I agree, yeah. Yes, we are, very. So, please, will you make a motion to extend the grant? I'll make a motion to extend the, um, the grant forward.
On the table?
I, I mean, it doesn't hurt to get the motion, just like it doesn't hurt to extend it, if we don't take it, we won't skip it. They're not gonna force us to take the money, I'm sure. Maybe I can ask for that money to go towards the roads instead.
Make sure we don't have a, fine, you know, that's a, that's a.
Right, yeah. I've not seen one, it leads me to believe that there's not one out there, but I can't be a hundred percent sure. We have the tech assistance grant, and we already did the hazard mitigation grant.
Next week, seven, we're training.
The, um, D R A is doing sessions for tax rate setting, I think it's a great idea for, um, for you guys to sit through it, it's pretty complex, they're doing it online September thirtieth and October ninth, I can forward the email to you if you didn't get it.
I think we all know that.
I think it's a good idea to do it, I know it.
It would be, I mean, it's not always straightforward and intuitive.
I'll see if I got it, it's, it's virtual?
Even if you're lost in it, and I'm not saying you will be, but even if you're, even if you're lost in it, it'll give you the opportunity to have some words and some things where you're like, yeah, I remember them talking about that, because it's not easy, and I'm gonna kind of jump over good governance for a moment, I cannot stress enough the importance of getting our tax bills issued so that we can start collecting money December first. With the flooding and the, if we don't start collecting tax revenue in the beginning of December, we will undoubtedly have to take out at least a tan, if not more, to keep things going, so.
I thought it was gonna happen anyway.
I, we are trying our best not to have to take out a loan, because it's money spent, right? You have app fees, you have legal fees, you have interest, you have, it's a, it takes a lot of work, and so, we need to make sure that we, we need to start planning so that we can get these D R A requirements in, and we can get our tax rates set, so December one, we start getting money, otherwise, we're in a load of trouble.
So when are we supposed to get that money back that was put into, like, a savings that?
October.
October, so that's gonna be a plus.
Yes, but we're, December fifteenth, county bill is due, that's almost a half a million dollars, so, I, I, I'm just putting it out there, and I want you guys to understand that when I start pushing and saying, we've got to do this, that's why. I'm trying to avoid loans.
When the staff, we've come and had Saturday sessions.
Yeah, we've met multiple nights on Saturdays or Sundays, and, yeah, it's, so, that's all.
Okey-dokey.
I'll go with this information, you guys will have it.
Thank you.
And I noticed, you guys noticed about the N H M A Good Governance Series, and that's a series like, of, I think there are like six, three sessions, it's very good.
Seven sessions.
That's taken it, yeah.
I actually saw that one, and I was, I threw the slide, I replied it, because I think I was coming to honor it.
Yeah.
Well, it starts next week.
And I thought I saw something about budgeting too.
Yes, you did.
And that was also, I'd recommend that as well. You know, especially when we've seen virtual, I think we're all pretty helpful, it's just kind of, the good governance is, even if you can't do it all, even if you can do some, you have to do all the classes and not miss any in order to get the certificate, but even if you do some, it's better than nothing, so, it was very, very helpful. We did that, we did that, we already talked about the excavator, we have one property that's available for auction this year, I need to know if we're going to do that, because we need to send out a ninety-day letter to the owners, if that's what we want to do, that gives them the option of repurchasing the property.
It's just, it just laying them all?
No.
It's just, it's housed, or is it?
There's a, a modular.
Okay.
And, we think that on, on that, it has, well, it's a auction company?
Yes.
And I think the firm that we used last year was very good.
Okay.
And I've talked to them already, and they said, even though we just have one, we'll fit it in somewhere, so they may not come here and do the auction, but they would try to include it in an auction nearby.
Yeah.
I think they have one in Conia, but I don't think our ninety days would allow that. I made motion for logic, that procedure, um, working with, um, like, the members who, you know, things like. N H T A S, D E, something.
Yeah. The firm that we used last year, um, I'm looking forward to, like, getting a week of market, or something, you know, if it's.
I second that one. On the table?
All right. All right.
Before we go into the back, I got a question.
I think we still have more, then, Paul.
Yeah, I know, I said before we go into the back.
Oh, I thought you meant non-public that.
No, no, no.
We got those too.
I just wanted to, real quick, um, we had the, uh, you know, post-agreement when Cosella came in, and at some point, we needed to discuss that, and I've really been thinking on it, I bet, and I personally, with everything that's going on, and I can't, and I wouldn't do this unless I got the, the board's permission for me to do so, I just thought, you know, you know, uh, yes, they're gonna be there, you know, it's time that we, we work with them, but I was gonna go, I want to go and ask, would they consider on three point five million dollars to, for, for a startup pay, and, uh, that would, would help the town a lot, especially with, with what's happened in our town with the roads and everything, it'd help and put us back on the, on the map, and I wasn't gonna do that without, uh, without your blessing, or we haven't come back in, or we have, we have a, a meeting where just the, just the residents come in and do, hammer, hammer, go, hot dog, like, they could ask questions and then we can, so I want your input on it, so I get one second.
So one of my questions is, you know, they threw up two million, um, we don't have an assessment for the value of the land or when it starts operations, I don't know how we can negotiate, because I don't know if two million is the right number, or if it's fifty-three point five million, or, you know, so.
Well, I, I think the, that's why I wanted to look, though, also, I think with what they have, that two million, that can include the taxes that they're gonna pay.
Yes, exactly, yes.
You think it did?
Yes, in lieu of.
I'll look at it again, but I don't think so. I could be wrong.
I have certified that as a meeting.
Yeah?
And they also wouldn't agree, you know, if it's, like, a tax abatement, so, I think that, I think there's gonna be a lot of work with that agreement, I mean, I think if we cover it in, so we should ask, we should have a, we should, we're gonna do that. I think it's gonna take a lot of work to negotiate it, um, I think right now, I'm looking at this, you know, we need to show that, tonight's not the night.
No, it's not, I just, was asking, to make sure if you think it, it would be all right if I asked them, and if you say no, then just stop, that's all.
I think we just don't know what the number, if we should be asking.
I think we just don't know what the number is, right, we should be asking them for 10 million, I don't know. I just don't know that without knowing that, what that baseline is.
So. Oh, well, I was just kind of curious, because I, it's been a while since I've looked through RSAs and everything, but I had read something, um, and I can't quote which RSA it was, that the select board can only vote on things that are ordinary business, and something of $2 million or any host grant like that, it's not ordinary business. And so it seems to me that that would have to be put to vote by the legislature, which is just sounds.
I guess we go ahead and ask your last question.
Yeah. On, I, I bought this landfill, and they, I got a letter saying that they were willing to give this town millions of dollars to help it, so they put this landfill in place to, to show them good faith, or whatever. Is that, the town really can't stop that landfill from going in? Because there's no laws, it says the town, that they can stop them from putting that landfill in. The state can, and the environmental can, but they obey the state laws, and they obey the, obey the environmental laws, they'll be allowed to put that landfill in there. Am I right or wrong? The town can't say to them, no, you can't put it in there.
Well, the state has the final say.
But the town has no say.
But they, no, and I, and, uh, Casella doesn't even have to offer anything to us.
I know that, that's what I'm saying.
They're directly.
When I'm at, my, my, I want, I want to learn something here. Does the town have to, does the town have the strength to say to Casella, no, you can't put it in there?
In my opinion, I don't think so.
If, if the, the state and the environmental, if they pass the state and the environmental regulations, can they put that landfill in?
I think so, man.
And, and this town can't stop it.
In my opinion, I, I don't think so.
Oh, I think it would be a good, in good faith, I think the town should negotiate it with the, with the people that own the landfill, because there's no way of stopping them from putting it in.
We don't want to be caught, where, we don't get.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, this, I'm guessing, I don't know.
No, I know you're not, you're not, and, and she's not saying no anyways.
I'm not, I don't, I just say, I don't know.
Right.
I just want to know, if the town can't stop them from putting a landfill in there, okay?
Right.
Then I would think it'd be a good, uh, my opinion, I think it would be a good idea to work with them, to get some money from them for benefit of the town. I mean, if, if, but if the town can stop them, then I could see if they're in store, if the town didn't want it.
No, I just brought this up to let them know, and, and if I, if I had the blessing, we can talk to them, but obviously, we, we got more discussion to make, and tonight is really not, tonight, because it's almost 10:30 o'clock, and I am tired.
We got a lot to go.
We got some more to do, and I want to get out of here.
Trust fund bank.
Um, so Chris Ennis was elected, um, trust fund trustee. We need to, um, submit a letter to the bank asking that she be added to the accounts, and that Scott Kleinshot be taken off of the accounts. Uh, it looks like when we added Christine Ordnance, I, the town gave me authority to sign the letter. So I drafted up the letter, I'm asking for the town's, or the select board's authority to sign it and send it, so Christine can do her job.
What's the, can you mention Scott Kleinshot, or what's video there?
He was a trustee of the trust fund.
And he's no longer?
Correct.
Okay.
His, his term ended.
All right, good.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
So some contract?
So, um, at one of the last meetings, I don't remember which one, the board signed a letter to DRA asking for their assistance with assessing Buckley. They kind of put a clampdown on them and said, sure, you can do assessing administrative work, but you cannot assess the value of any properties, which does not help the town of Dalton. So first off, we need to issue a letter of cancellation to the agreement that we have with David Buckley. I can do that, that's not an issue, but I need the board's approval. We have to give them a 30-day letter based on the agreement that we signed. Um, and two, DRA was here last week, they'll be here again this week, um, so they've jumped in, they're helping us tremendously. We are paying their hourly rate plus travel, but it's still cheaper than what we're, I mean, than what we were paying Buckley. So, um, DRA will only help us for 2024, they're not helping any other towns, because they don't have the manpower either. I've been in contact with two assessing companies that said that they will have capacity to take on new clients the end of this year, early next year, so I'm trying to get those quotes, um, so that we can be prepared for next year. But right now, DRA is helping us, which is integral to us getting our tax bills out. I make a motion that we authorize to that, to send a letter of cancellation to, um, Buckley.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we looking for, for a new assessor?
Yes. And I have to, um, reaching out to.
Can I have your DLT, go like that?
Um, we got the dollar amounts that we're getting for the block grant for 2025. The payments come that half, back half of '24 into the first half of '25, we'll be getting just under $71,000. We receive the first $21,000, um, the end of July.
Do we receive another one this year or not?
We'll get another one in October.
So probably about the same, about $20,000 or so?
Yes, it'll be the same amount, and then in January and April, we get about $14,000.
Maybe they need to schedule?
Our next, the next regular scheduled meeting would fall on Labor Day. Obviously, we're not meeting on that day, so can we meet on Tuesday? Tuesday, September 3rd.
At the 6:30, correct?
Yes.
I make motion that we, that we believe we need Tuesday, September 3rd.
And I'd like to schedule a working session on Monday, September 9th. And tentative, we put another one on the calendar for Monday, September 23rd.
Did you say 9th?
September 9th and September 23rd for working sessions.
They'll grow up Monday, right?
Do we have all, both our Mondays? Maybe October 7th for working session, or the 23rd?
Um, sure, we might need to.
And not have it on 23rd, on September 23rd?
If we can get a lot done on the 9th, yes.
So for now, we'll just have Monday the 9th?
And 10/7? I mean, these are on the calendar as tentative anyway, I'm just putting it out there that it's likely we might need to meet, because we're getting into.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I will say that, I'm trying to throw this up, because, uh, my wife and I, uh, I were going on a, uh, going sort of south for our 44th wedding anniversary, so we're trying to schedule it so that I'm here, what I'm trying to do. So I just, uh.
But it'll be tax season, budget season?
Exactly, but it's going to be here in a week, so.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be, it'll be like Tuesday, Tuesday, Saturday, that type of thing, so.
I mean, if you can't be here, you can't be.
If you're there on the Monday, it's not going to be an issue.
Okay. That works for me, so, October, I think it's the weekend of the 11th, isn't it?
Yeah, October 7th.
That's what I thought, it's October 7th.
Is Columbus Day?
No, Columbus Day is that Monday? Is that Monday the 7th, or is it?
Monday is the 7th.
Oh. Yes, so I was saying that to you, so Columbus Day is Monday the 7th, which is your scheduled date for your.
Working session, so we can change that to the 8th, because I have Columbus Day off, as a paid holiday. Wednesday?
Nope. Thursday?
The 10th?
No.
10th.
That's, what's, you, that's Election Day. What's the la, what's?
No, that's September 10th, September 10th is Election Day. Oh, God, we have a working session on 9/9, do I really want to do that? I did that last time, it was okay, I'll, it'll be okay, I'll. Who needs a sleep?
I'm a lot of coffee.
We'll be fine, right?
Yeah.
Maybe a little special coffee.
Tax collector down court, office rebound?
So we got free furniture from the US District Courthouse. They sent me, they sent me emails and saying, hey, we're getting rid of this, first come, first served. And so we've got, just got a lot of mismatched stuff that drawers don't open, and when they open, they fall apart in the tax collector town clerk office, and so I'd like to get rid of some stuff in there, and then put the stuff that we got for free in there. Like, we got really nice desktops and really nice lateral cherry wood file cabinets for free. We got to make legs for the desks, but that's, you know, $30 at Home Depot, not a big deal. So I just, you know, even though, yeah, it's tax collector town clerk, not really under your direction, the office space is. So I just want to ask for permission so that I can just.
It's better than what we got?
It's better than what we got.
Then do it.
And, and we have paint, so I'd like to paint in there, so we don't have walls that are three shades, just three different colors. And I'll do it on my own time, just like before with the bathrooms, I just ask you guys buy the, if I have to buy anything, I shouldn't, I think we have enough. So that's all, I just, I'm just trying to.
Authorize to that, to redecorate the office.
We decorate the office.
And to, you know, if there are individuals, a sense of like lace for the desk and paint, little supplies. Authorize it to go ahead and do it, no, please, no.
I, I promise I won't go out and buy a bunch of unnecessary stuff, I don't do that.
I, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, Kathy, for going to Congress with your trailer and picking it up for us.
You're welcome.
And. Saying that it might not have been that broken before Kathy broke it.
Adam, Adam, Adam was here.
A little marker will make it just fine.
Yeah, Adam was here and helped me unload it, and we put it into the room next door.
Yeah, Kevin Wythem Senior came in, he's like, well, we got nothing else to do but move furniture? I'm like, it was free, Kevin, he's just getting it off the trailers, we get it in the building, that's it.
Election September 10th?
Yep, so September 10th is the first election, we need select board representation, and then the second election is November.
5th.
5th, yeah, I keep wanting to say 4.
I know.
September, that's a primary.
It's a primary.
Primary.
It's a practice.
So I, I can work, um, like, big day.
Yeah.
So somebody's coming in first thing in the morning, I can come in like 9:10, and then I was going to leave like late afternoon, and then I could come back until 6:30, I'm usually by 6:30. I can fill in the line. Come in at night, or like, polls open at 7, and we have to tell.
You open at 8?
I'm a morning person myself, so.
And it's 7.
I'm a morning person myself.
So you want to be here.
I'll be here at, until 12:00.
38 in the mornings?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Tuesday.
Okay, that would be good, so if you, can you be here by, um, what time can you have your, 8:00 in New York Town?
4:30, at least.
Okay, that's good, then I could go home and take care of my daughter.
I'll probably get here a little earlier.
Okay. All right, Eric, we'll put you in 5:00 to finish, how's that? And hopefully, we don't have a 1:00 or 2:00 AM.
It happens. One day or two off.
Whoa!
It's a tiger.
Somebody's need, did you lean against the? No, everything, no, even the hallway, everything.
That was a power fluctuation. Speed this meeting up.
Unfortunately, yeah. I know.
Could be it, totally, that could be it.
Uh.
Maybe that's a sign to wrap it up.
You have 4.
I make, any promotion if you want to know about what?
Is it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this it, though?
Yeah.
I hope this is it, because I'm.
We'll just come back to it, your honor.
It's dark over there, the finest person has a generator.
It's going to be, uh.
Yeah, hey, guys.